Well, I think I'll call the meeting board. Uh, 7:06. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I know that, uh, it hasn't started work officially for the Franklin Northwest yet, but we have a new, newly hired superintendent with us this evening, Julie Rehjemal. So, I'd like to welcome you to our meeting. This is your first meeting.
It is.
Other than your hiring process that you had, so, welcome. Do we have agenda amendments on this agenda?
A slight one. Uh, I would like to introduce Heidi Thompson. Heidi is considering, uh, working as our board secretary, taking notes. And she's here tonight just to see if she would like this work, so I would ask the board to be on their best behavior. I don't sure. Two colors until she signs on the line for a minor contract. So with that, uh, I'd like to introduce Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
I don't think we have any other agenda amendments.
All right.
Uh, Morgan Leahue will not be reporting tonight. She's at summer camp, so there will be no student council comment. The rest I think is what was...
All right. Thank you. That brings us, I believe, to, uh, public comment. Let's see, we do have some public here this evening, so, I guess...
And you have questions, so I...
If you'd like, we got an extra seat right here.
No, it's okay. I'm James Gilmet.
Yep.
Uh, Gilmet's in demand services. Um, I came to have a few questions answered. Um, I, actually, the first question I'd like to know, how many board members knew that I placed a bid on the track work?
I heard about it, uh, probably after the fact.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, that's why I'm here tonight, because it's very concerning to me. Um, I read the ad in the paper back in Messenger in, uh, April, or January, April. There was an ad in there for the track and field repair work. Called, sent an email to, um, the director of John Longston. And it was, because it was funny, because they sent the, the paper noted that there was a pre-bid meeting, but it was already prior to when it went into the paper. So I sent him an email and said, "Is this still open for bids?" Yes, he said so. Said at the time, "Come out and look at it." So I went out and looked at the track. And he told I, said, "Do you have an RFP?" You know? "No, but this is how much money we've got to spend, and this is all we want done to work. Can you do it within that? You know, come up with a plan." So I did all the work, sent him the plan, sent him what I would, could do. You could, and I could do with everything I wanted within my budget, with the budget he had. Um, then he came back a week or so later and asked me for personal references, written references, pictures of jobs I've done. Um, and then he said, "Well, I'm gonna go to the board with this in May." And, uh, didn't hear nothing back, didn't hear nothing back. And I, uh, ran into follow route one morning after the meeting, and I asked him who was worded the contract, because it's obviously public information. Um, and he told me to contact the superintendent. Um, and so I contacted him after three, four phone calls. I finally got a call back, um, with who was worded the contract, and, uh, and, um, and then he called me back with who was worded the contract. So then my concern is, is this was put out to bids and specified it was supposed to be a sealed bid, so why wasn't those sealed bids open in front of the public session here in front of the camera? And with all you board members should have known about that bid. I'm a local contractor here, I'm a local taxpayer. I'm, I'm, no, no problem getting outbid by anybody. But when I, when it's not done properly, I'm pretty sure you guys didn't follow proper procedure for open meeting laws when you put something out a bid like that. Um, and then to find out, you give it to an out of town contractor out of Eastburg, Vermont, that doesn't have any more qualifications than I have to do track and field work. I've been in the stone business for 25 years. You know, these guys have done a business for five, six years from what I can find on them. I don't see anywhere it's in their website that they do any kind of stonework. It's very concerning to me. I want to hear what you have to say about it.
In a school district of this size, we don't open bids at a board meeting. That's done through committee. And that was a committee of the principal, of the athletic director, and myself. And looking at qualifications, the amount was $30,000.
That's right.
And that was put out in the RFP, and looking...
Well, there was no RFP. It was just purple.
It was a proposal.
Yeah.
And we got two proposals. We looked at both. We looked at the, uh, the type of work that both contractors did. And we have experience working with the other contractor. They've been working on fields, uh, not just for this school, but for other schools. And they have done tracks, and that's why the bid went to the other company.
I can't find any information says that they've ever done any track work. All I see is a planted grass seed and pomeons for turkey.
Yeah.
That has nothing to do with running track. And I, you know, I did everything they said, I put it all in there. Everything was in the guidelines. I don't understand it.
Okay.
I don't, I think there's, there's more to the story. And it's what bothers me that the board members, you know, and then Mr. Jarvis, I called him about it. And that was after the board meeting that you guys proposed, or went with hiring the other company. And he didn't even know who, because, know that I'd bid on the job. He didn't think it went out to bids. So my concern is, the board doesn't have any say in what you guys spent money on here?
They do. Uh, but because of the size of the, of the budget, and because of the roles of committees, and the roles of the different departments, those issues come, uh, to the board in a, in a pro forma standpoint. And it's more as an awareness than it is an actual, uh, adoption of those RFPs. And to get into all of those issues on a $15 million budget, uh, is not, is not the level that this board operating at. This is more of a policy board. In order for that to be functional, uh, it happens through committees and it happens through departments.
Interesting. I guess our part of the process was to determine the amount, and kind of, you know, what, what to tackle with that amount.
I just find it odd that you spent $30,000 on a project, but you've got some open... There's no vote? I mean, isn't it supposed to be publicly voted on?
It didn't. The board authorized $30,000 to be expended on the track and directed through administration, uh, to complete that process. And so the board did make that formal decision.
You just said $30,000. You said $30 million.
I didn't say $30,000. $30,000. Yeah.
Yeah, I...
Just disappointed, that, you know, and I'm, and I sort of, sure don't want to sound like a poor loser, but when you, you've got local tax dollars here in town, I pay taxes and so on, and it, it doesn't give me more right to get the job just because I'm taxpayer. But when you give it to company out of Eastburg, Vermont, I say, "Come on, this is ridiculous." I've been doing this for 25 years. These guys have been in this for five years.
Hey, can I ask you a question?
Yep, certainly.
Can you tell the board where you graduated from?
I graduated from this high school right here.
That's right. That's right.
And if, you know, it irks me that you board members didn't have a clue what was going on with this, and who, that I even put a bid on. And that, that's what irked me when I called Mr. Jarvis, and he knew nothing about I even put a bid on this job. And I called you, Mr., "Is it Boucher, Boucher?" And you never even returned my phone call.
Right.
You know, that's all you had to do was return my phone call and answer these questions, and we're all set. It's all I want. I'm not here to stir the pot and cause trouble, but it's pretty disturbing, man.
Well, and I have...
You guys, and it, it, just not to throw it in your face, but you guys have got $2.9 million in a bond. You're gonna do work to this school. How is that gonna go? Is it gonna go the same way? You're gonna have a committee that's gonna spend $2.9 million? Just asking a question.
I will tell, I will tell you that in defense of Dennis, I told him that I had communicated with you twice.
Yep.
And...
And I didn't get my answers to his, answer his question. That's why I wanted to speak to him. He is the chair. He should have called me back.
Well, I think that day I got your message, I got an email the same day, and it...
Oh, I'm sure it went to college and told you what I was looking for, so...
Well, it sounded through the email that it had already been answered, I guess. I apologize for that.
And I actually called you twice, so...
Yeah, I don't remember the second one, but I, I know you left a message, and I, and like I said, it was just about timing. I got the email at the same time, and that's, that's probably not a good reason, but that's why I didn't respond.
So, I just expressed my concern, so, you guys all know, it's on camera?
Well, thanks.
I think you guys have been...
Thank you. All right, uh, still in the public comments. We have other public, we do have public here. Is there, would you like to share anything at this point, or...
When you get to the science work, or whatever that's...
Is that on the agenda?
I think it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's on the...
And somewhere, we need to...
Do you want to move that up on the agenda?
I think that makes sense.
You're such nice and patient.
Mr. Hartman, are you well-versed in the field process for the 11th grade science students?
I have something here that I can certainly share.
And copies for board members?
If, and it might be the same one.
We've got a couple chairs. This is pertaining to the science curriculum for the whole high school, not just one particular grade.
Jay, there's an extra one.
If we should have to pass it off, I don't have them on.
Okay, everyone has copies?
Yep.
Pretty interesting reading, everybody reading it. I see that.
Would you like to join us if they want to? I saved a seat just for you.
Um, I did see the letter that went to the parents.
Mr. Chairman, is the student here also involved? Is the student here part of that process?
Um, this is my daughter, Yeremani, and she just finished, um, her junior year. And she is a class of 2019. And so her class is the first one required to have science nine, 10, and 11.
Because if she's here with you, I'd like to invite her to sit at the table. She may have finished the contributor, and we may have questions. Thank you.
Welcome.
Do you have my comments?
Well, I'm, the, the letter that people are getting right now, uh, I'm gonna see if everybody has comments, or is there any more certification on that?
Dennis, um, I see they're looking at, uh, they must have an A-, and 90% of better is a prerequisite. Um, I would like to see that opened up with, with an A- or recommendation from a teacher to open that gate, because if a kid misses it by a couple of points, uh, it could mean the difference between his, his future and non-future. So I would at least like to see it, if they're gonna have a grade automatic acceptance with an A-, and then with the recommendation of the, of his present science teacher.
All right. I see that as being taken down by administration as we speak, so, that will, that will be, that will be strongly considered.
And, and I would suggest, just based on past experience, the and/or recommendation, so that the teacher could, you know, get a hearty, if it was a 90, the teacher would obviously be given a hearty recommendation, but if it was an 80, the teacher said, "Hey, just off in one test," or whatever, or it shouldn't be, it could be. Then, so an and slash or, I think would be the...
I agree with both of my colleagues, but I think we need to have a reference point for the teacher recommendation. They have to have like, maybe at least an 85, or something of that nature. I don't want to put a teacher in a situation where some student who maybe has applied himself or herself, comes in with a 79, and says, "But I can do it, and I'd love to do it." And the teacher says, "I know you can do it, but your track record really doesn't show it." So I think there needs to be an incentive to the student, if they really want to do that, and they're planning, that they know there's a baseline. And then the teacher has a discretion during that range. And I'm not sure what the range should be, but I would say, you know, 90 or 85 would...
A minimum of 85.
A minimum of 85.
That's, that's good.
I mean, and I'm very pro-student, but at the same time, I don't want to put a teacher in a situation where they feel they're boxed in, and the student hasn't showed their performance. It gives a student plenty of opportunity to say, "I want to do that, I want to show it."
Because grades are so subjective, I hate to see a line made with a grade, with a percent.
I, I do too.
But if one teacher marks differently, I've worked with teachers who said, "Well, I'm proud of it. I've never given an A in every, in any course I've ever taught." And this happens.
I had teachers like that.
Yeah. All mine were like that.
It's just, it's just, as I say, I think it's pretty suit, they need to have a reference point.
You have a buddy to plan?
Well, I have a question, because my daughter is gonna be a freshman this year. And I'm here because I feel strongly that this is a disservice, this next generation in science is a disservice to kids who excel in science. I have many questions that I would love to discuss with you, to discuss them. But as far as each grade goes, it's great you're opening it to the 11th grade this next year. What are you gonna do in two years and there are no grades?
And that's the issue, as the policy will be adopted tonight, proficiency-based graduation requirements, which were done on RUBR.
Are we gonna discuss this this evening? Because this is another hot topic.
It sounds like we've opened it up. If you don't mind, there's a seat over there by Mr. Hartman.
My...
Can I make a comment about...
Yes.
Um, so I'm very glad you brought up the, the grade. So my son, um, who was a class of 11?
Yeah.
11, 2011. Um, the policy back then is you could take CP bio if you passed a certain test. He didn't get high enough on the test. He did the summer work, he took the class in the fall, he ended up taking six advanced science classes, because he could get them in the freshman year. So, I understand. Um, I don't think you're gonna have an issue with kids that don't really want to be in those advanced classes pushing to get in the advanced classes. So I really like the recommendation of a recommendation and/or the grade. Um, you know, every kid is unique, so...
What you're saying, they're gonna want, if they want to get in there, they're gonna do it. And that letter only talks about public grade.
Yes, this is what it used to say.
If the student isn't achieving, the odds are him wanting or her wanting to go on to a more rigorous class is pretty small. It would be probably from the prodding of the parents. So, I, I wouldn't fear a, a student who hasn't been successful wanting to get into a more rigorous, um, program at all. And that's why I, and I do object to drawing a line as far as a percent basis goes. At the, at the very least, I would like to see it at least A and B students if you were doing it that way. But putting a percent mark on there is kind of tough. Because they're subjective.
The other issue, I'll just say that this is the policy that, um, the issue board adopted on June 6, proficiency-based learning and graduation requirements. The point is, right now, the assessment is in numeric grade, proficiency-based, you're talking about ones before. And when a student demonstrates proficiency, um, sometime in the future, there will be different ways to assess that. Either to know it, or they don't know it, as opposed to gradations of how well they know. And that's, that's why the change. So I don't, uh, I don't know where we are right now with marrying the two of them. What is? And this is, this is a process that all schools in Vermont are going through, that's not heading to MBU. MBU is actually, um, a little ahead of the curve as far as making these kinds of transitions.
So I guess I, you have any other comments right off? Looks like you have.
I, I have many thoughts about the proficiency grade, uh, base grading, because I'm unsure how colleges are going to accept this. My daughter, just this year, was fortunate enough to be in the top 10 of her class and received a nice scholarship from the Tyler Place, an award from the Tyler Place for being in that. And does this mean that kids in the future are not gonna be eligible for that if the Tyler Place is still willing to give it? Because I have no idea how you're gonna determine who sits in what place. And many kids are driven by, "I want to get that A. I want to get that A+." I have one of those myself. So, I think it's a, I think the proficiency grading, from speaking to friends of mine who are teachers, it's a great tool, because it helps them to identify, uh, in their curriculum where they missed the mark. You can tell, "Hey, every single kid did not do well on this one piece. I need to go back, re-teach it." And then they generally do better. So it's a great teaching tool, and perhaps we should use the proficiency, but keep the letter grading side by side with that also. Um, and I think it's wonderful that MBU is proactive in, in being the leader in this. But also on my college tours, there was mixed, oh, we're working on, how are we gonna take students, and how are we gonna look at their grades? I got a lot of different feedback from different colleges. You know, Cassleton was, "Oh, we are, we were working on this, there's many schools going this way." And then other people were like, you know, "What are you talking about?" You know, they weren't on board with, "We're ready to do it." So, um, I think that it's in MBU's best interest and in the students' best interest to perhaps keep them side by side.
I think, Mr. Hartman, I think we are doing that now as far as the correlation of letter, of letter grade, numeric grade, and proficiency. Are you comfortable speaking about that?
Um, I would rather not get into a whole lot of detail, because I probably would put both feet inside my mouth if I did. But yes, we, obviously, we're gonna have sort of a mixed marriage here right now over the next three years.
We are still in transition.
That is, we need to go beyond the next three, too, because that's where I fall.
I wonder if there's, I'm sure there's a lot of interest in this proficiency-based grading, so I'm wondering if there should be some sort of forum just for that, purpose just for that topic. I mean, I'm not sure, you know, as, as board members, if, you know, if we're... It sounds to me like it's something that's coming from higher up than us. And, you know, I, I don't know what kind of control we have. I guess the, what we can do is we can work with it, like you're talking about, and doing something, uh, combined systems. I think that's all right, but I don't know what we really are obligated to do.
Well, let me, let me offer this. We may not be able to make a decision tonight. However, Richard Hartman is here, and Richard is a teacher, and he is, if you look at the policy, he is Mr. Flexible Pathways. And he's got about a five-minute presentation tonight.
So everybody should maybe have a copy of my briefing. I'm gonna bridge it quite a bit to, to keep it within five minutes, also give some time for, uh, questions. My name is Richard Bartman, I'm the case manager coordinator. Uh, I'm gonna review kind of what it is, and how well we did with it. In 2013, a new law was passed, Act 77, Flexible Pathways Initiative. It's simply, it's a couple of things, two things very important to me, to our students, personalized learning and flexible pathways. So personalized learning is really, uh, a process whereby each student creates a personalized learning plan, which is an effective roadmap for their education. And that roadmap is designed to take them to their goals. Their goals are determined through a process of self-assessment. Uh, you look at their values, what they want to be, uh, what their abilities are, strengths, weaknesses. And they set goals, and then they use their education as a means to achieve those goals. Every plan is different, but they all have some common, uh, components. They all have a self-assessment, they all require the student to set goals, to create and implement action steps, to document their achievements, and then to use that to reflect on their successes, and they use it to adjust their personal, uh, personalized learning. This is something that they pick up in the 7th grade, and it's them all the way through to career and college. Uh, in the process, they, uh, pick up a series of different pathways to achieve their goal. So flexible pathways are processes that are in addition to the traditional classes offered at the school. And the state has identified four primary flexible pathways. Dual enrollment, early college, career and technical education, and work-based learning. And work-based learning is my favorite, right?
So just so that the board knows, dual enrollment means you're taking, get two free dual enrollment courses paid for by the state. These are college courses that students predominantly take here, because we have teachers that are, are trained to be able to deliver the college-level rigor in a high school course, and they're getting credit, uh, they're getting six credits free for college. Early college means as a senior, a senior here at MBU, would go to a college full-time. We have a number of students that are doing that next year. We've had ones in the past that have done it. And you're doing it. Okay. See, I'm telling it's a trade, aren't I? What college are you gonna go to?
Cassleton.
Okay, for the, for next year.
Yes.
Good. Career and technical education, what they're getting at Northwest, where Center and/or Cold Hollow, we have students going to either of those, or going to St. Albans than we have going to Eunice World. And then Richard's gonna talk about work-based learning.
Uh, so work-based learning, uh, probably, uh, the simplest way to say is that it's on-the-job learning, but it's really very structured. So, it allows students to achieve their educational goals by interacting with industry or community professionals in a real workplace environment. Not only do they learn the skills on the job, uh, not only do they earn money oftentimes, but they also can earn academic credit. The key is that this is tied to their personal learning plan. Okay, this isn't just to go get a job sorting bottles or something like that, but if they want to be a machinist, we want to see them working in a machine shop. If they want to be, um, a diesel mechanic, we want to see them working in a diesel mechanic shop. This is what we find that it does. This is, uh, the evidence that is presenting itself to us right away. So the first thing that it does is it increases student engagement. So the students are, have a buy-in to their educational process. They are making, allowed to make choices, um, it's consistent with what their goals are, and they're very engaged. That engagement reduces truancy and drop out rates. It better prepares students for college and career. This isn't just a, a high school to work, this is a high school to college to work. All students, when they leave, no matter if they go to college, get a PhD, they're eventually gonna work. And the other thing that it does is it helps local industries identify future employers. Both those students that are coming right out of high school and the ones that will return after college. So the role of the work-based, work-based learning coordinator, this is what I do, um, we kind of have a model. It's, it's a new program, but we need to say, we gotta make it safe, legal, and education. So we want the process, the students to be safe at the workplace, as safe as they are here. And that takes a little bit of doing, because, um, you know, it's not a school, they put them out in the ministry. But we pay close attention, do site visits, make sure that, uh, your companies are compliant with safety laws. We visit those places quite routinely. Uh, we want to make sure that it's legal, that all job label laws are being observed, American Disabilities Act, civil rights, equal opportunity for employment, uh, and FERPA are all being observed. And the last thing there is insurance coverage. We've gotta make sure that the students are covered either by workers' compensation or by school, with the needle gap in there. There's a needle gap in there. They want to be covered by one or the other. And the last thing is it really has to be quality education. And to do that, you identify the learning goals, you document their learning, you do an assessment process. And from that, you issue credits or recognize proficiencies. And I'll say those last three bullets on the new education. Internships, apprenticeships, and industry-recognized credentials are the gold standard of work-based learning. Those are, we don't design those. Those are designed by third-party components for welding, for mechanics, for machining. And we use those when we can, but there is.
Could you give us some examples of organizations that issued those credentials?
So the American Welding Society, structural welding.
So they're national, those are more national.
Absolutely, just something. Nationally recognized. OSHA 10 is one for safety. The Husky Injection Molding is running an apprenticeship program for CNC machinists, nationally recognized. The curriculum is set by the third-party agencies. I'm going to skip this because I'm short on time and there's better, more important things. Work-based learning is a student-centric, multi-agency coordinated service. So at the very center of it is the student and student parent. I consider that to be part of the unit. And they're supported in their work-based learning endeavors by a whole series of services, some inside the school, some outside the school. I want to say that the Work Investment Board Executive Director Kathy LaVoy is critical in supporting this, not just in our school, but county-wide. Local businesses, obviously, have been extremely gracious and helpful. Special education, local rehab, the guidance counselor. And this all really starts in the 10th grade with a mandatory class that we take here in our school. It's Career Examinations run by Mary Hartman. Really sets a tremendous foundation for what they're going to do in their lives in 12th grade.
Let's see about the Kathy LaVoy, Franklin Grandile Whip. Each school has been asked, each supervisory unit's been asked to contribute $3,000 to that, that whip. Kathy's role is to do the liaison connection with businesses. Businesses are not required by state law to accept internships and apprenticeships. Schools are. So what Kathy's role is, she's a filter or the hub to, for schools in Franklin County to be able to set up and parse out students on a, on a reasonable basis to the respective companies so that everyone isn't making that direct call. We are calling Kathy and Kathy is helping us with the distribution. So that's new work. It's important to be able to maintain a good relationship with the businesses that we're working with.
So everybody still have a PLE?
Correct.
And who monitors those and how often do you? So who do they work with to sit down? We have IEP for special ed. You have designated times that we all will work together. Who meets with them specifically and how often?
Uh, it's recommended that it's updated at least once a year. And I think right now it's, it's being handled primarily by the guidance department. But everybody has, everybody supports that PLE. I'm going to bypass the assessments. Those are standard, common workplace assessments that we work on. And what I'd like to talk about real quickly, very important, is a summary of what happened this year and what's going to happen this summer. So each of the, each of the rows is a different student. It's their, I left it me out just because I didn't get credit for them ahead of time in the third-year series. But it was their placement, their duties, and what their post-graduation, these are confirmed post-graduation accomplishments. So we have somebody working at a TV station. She did tremendous work. Northwest Access TV put together an excellent internship for this person. And he's been hired full-time as superior technical service. We've got a benefits position. I won't go over long, but you can see it's kind of all over the place. We have good access to a variety of different industries and a variety of different skill sets.
I could be wrong, but I think I just got my power plug by the guy from Jameson.
And this student might have worked on it.
I think so.
Yeah.
Change my oil today.
Excellent community support. We had a student over there who was going to go off to a two-year technical program in Ohio and instead opted for this paid apprenticeship at the Husky Injection Molding. That's a, and I'd like to talk about that a little bit at the end, but it's a, it's a, it's a unique and very high-quality opportunity for kids. This is another one. We've got diesel mechanics. A couple of students went into the military. The one with three different placements, he took full advantage of the, of his career and his sorority process. He did three different placements. He was successful in all three and he's working construction now. But the machine shops are definitely not working well. And then this right here is our success in the Husky Institute, Summer Institute. So it's a, it's a paid, nationally-recognized apprenticeship program for CNC mechanics. It runs eight weeks this summer, eight weeks next summer. And it leads to 26 college credits, a guaranteed job, and a nationally-recognized certification as a CNC machinist. We've had tremendous success with this program, the school has. So they had 14 openings this year. About 125 applicants get whittled down to 14. This year, eight of those successful applicants were students from the Siskiyou Valley University School. Last year, they had 10 positions and six were from the Siskiyou Valley University School. Of the six who were successful last year, five of them are still working full-time as machinists at Husky. I see them when I get in my coffee at 6:45 in the morning. They're coming off shift and they're doing fantastic. So it's, it's, it's been a very good year, not only for experiences, but also for placements in these formal apprenticeships and for kids successfully transitioning into what we call career jobs, a job that has full benefits. That's kind of, you know, that pays more than minimum wage and has a benefits package. So the trends that I observe is that this, the demand for this is growing rapidly. I could easily work, I could easily sign up 30 or 40 kids, but I can't handle it. However, most students require a paid experience, and this is why. A lot of them are working and they're underemployed. They're working sorting bottles. They're doing kind of off-the-books work. But that money is very important to them, to their families, and they can't abandon that to do an unpaid position and still work at a senior car and meet their needs, you know, buy a ticket to the prom, do stuff like that. This, most of them are 18 and businesses are prepared right now to hire 18-year-old high school graduates. Excellent jobs out there. But there's a gap, and that is kids who are in school who want to start that transition in a work-based learning program. They're not 17 and their schedules are a little limited. Formal apprenticeship programs, the gold standard in my opinion, are increasing. The Vermont Department of Labor understands that this is going to fill the gap between high school and a four-year college. So we hope to see more of that and we will, we will certainly access that as it becomes available. Quality employees are in high demand everywhere and the students that are coming out of this school are succeeding. I'm getting tremendous feedback from them. And I want to say something about, a lot of the students that I've placed to date have come out of the Ag program. They're responsible. They've got good skills. They're mature. And people are starting, they're kind of the standard that people are looking for now out in the, out in the community. So a big shout-out to the instructors that are running the Ag program because it's working and those kids are really succeeding. So moving forward, again, this Build the Business, the community partnerships through Kathy LaVoy. I think the state is hopefully looking for an incentive to throw at the businesses because it is difficult for them to, this does take a little bit of time and effort for them to set up these apprenticeships and internships. We continue to leverage formal apprenticeships and internships. Transportation is a discriminator. Kids that have good, reliable transportation can access this. Kids that don't, can't. It will grow even faster if we find a way to embed acquired credits, such as graduation requirements, such as science, math, history, or allow, use it as a tool to demonstrate competencies, competencies or proficiencies. There is kids that need good, that have, that need life skills training, that can be done in the workplace environment, but if you need a job coach and that's a minimum of the age. I'd like to broadly appeal and utility to students that have a college now so they can use this as an internship to demonstrate their, their intentions to a college admissions board of their interest in a subject like nursing or medicine or engineering. And I'd also like to broaden it. We're doing this a little bit this year, but I'd like to go even further and serve those students that are ours, that are enrolled in VOWs, NOVA, SOAR, or other alternative programs. On the very last page.
Do we have any, like, healthcare internships or is that nature with local, um, Russian homes and agencies?
Healthcare is the hardest to get into and the reason is because Northwest Tech Center has a healthcare program and they get first priority as the way it should be. So it's part of their program. They, they're required to do an internship. And one of the things that Kathy LaVoy is doing is, when this first started, we swamped local businesses. Everybody, there was people going down to local businesses and you'd call them up and they'd go, "You're the fourth phone call I've had today." So what we want to do is coordinate this through Kathy LaVoy and, and try to get a, an allotment of, even if it's just a couple, three or four internships for those students that are interested and let them kind of compete for it like a job, apply for it like a job. So, but healthcare, healthcare is the number one, most asked-for job experience that I've seen since I've been in this position. On the last page of this, there's a press release that I put out for last year, but I never got it. It got overwhelmed, overcome by events last year. And this was a little press release that celebrated the six boys that we got into the Husky Injection Molding. I won't read it. I'll let you guys read it, but it describes the process. It's competitive. It is high-quality. It's nationally-recognized. It's college, it's college credits. College, they get a transcript at the end. And so I want to do another one. The, our, the next group of kids start on the 25th. I want to do this again. This time I actually get it to a newspaper, get it through our school, get it to the press outlet. And that's, that is all I have. So any questions?
Perhaps we're doing this, this in a different place, but I'm kind of selfish. I want teachers to be grown. And, and so how are we connecting education opportunities and apprenticeships with students who, you know, my, my senior from my charge, just graduated candidates, who want to come back and teach? And I want to encourage more of that. Have you seen any interest in that and how people connect classrooms or that sort of thing?
We, I haven't seen it for the high school level, but I have seen it for early essential education and grade school. So there is a, there is a fairly significant demand, probably second to healthcare, where students have kind of think that they want to work with kids, youth, young kids. And Mrs. Hartman does a fair amount of placements. She does the One Day Job Chatter. And she does lots of those in everything from, you know, daycare real early all the way up through schools. So that, that is something that we can do. And the thing is, there's really no limit to this. We can apply this concept to any, any career cluster or any, you know, it really is based on what the student wants to do.
How are they going to fit Science 11 in their schedule?
It's the, it's, it's really hard for the kids that are, fill their schedule up to get into a competitive four-year college with band and science and they play sport. And all of those things are very important. My thought process is, is that internships, like with college kids, are, the best time for that is in the summer. But that's when all the kids disappear. So it is, it's, scheduling is a real tough issue for kids that have a four-year college schedule.
So the education is a discriminator like the U.
It is, it is. And, you know, we, at one point did a, just did a, you know, just looked at four years, how many class periods there are in a day and plugged in all the requirements and then plugged in what you would take if you were looking to get into a competitive college. And it's a, it's a pretty full dance card.
Don't, don't get me wrong. It's a great program.
But again, it, it's, so what it, the, the basic premise is that if a student has a goal, if a student really wants to become an engineer, the courses and the pathways that they select will be different than someone who wants to, who wants to be a heavy equipment operator. One by necessity requires calculus in college. The other one requires experience in operating heavy equipment. And so I think that it, it, it really is based on the needs and the wants and the goals and desires of the student.
I'm going to make a suggestion here. Don, if you have a question.
You know, I assume your program is a school year? Is that true or is it continuing to something?
It doesn't, unfortunately. Now, I do supervise those kids. I go catch up with them from time to time at Milton. I, I will be there on the 25th. I make sure that they've got transportation and stuff like that, but no, it's, it, I'm under the same contract as a teacher.
I guess I would share with our new superintendent and our board chair, when we build the budget for next year, I'd like to have a discussion what it would take to have a summer program. I was affiliated with a youth school that did the summer program. And it allowed that student who wanted calculus, advanced science beyond chemistry and physics, four years of language, to get an abbreviated experience, but an experience to a degree of running a six-week summer program. So I, I would be interested in, at least the budget, I'm saying what, what it costs us to open that up to students who schedules not allow that.
Can you elaborate? Are you talking an apprenticeship program or are you talking classes?
I'm talking the apprenticeship. It wasn't strictly about for students. It went to Husky or went to James or somewhere.
Right.
I think there's a level of students here who might have that interest, that desire, but they have so many courses they have to take because they want to pursue higher education that they can't get. That's what I'm talking about.
I have to make a suggestion and they help us to move forward or not. I'm going to say, let's not mix and match letter, numeric grades with standards of one through four rubrics right now because I don't think we're there yet in the planning phase. And the board, consider moving forward. This opt-out of that Science 11 class so that we get something done and have something prepared for, a structure for next year.
So we would, we're looking for motion for that, I suppose.
So it's only going to be for next year or is it going to keep going on?
I guess, yeah.
What I'm saying is, you start it next year. We continue to do the planning of how there's a dovetail between the traditional letter grades and numeric grades. And as we develop the program in the future that may do both standards and those letter grades, we make a change to this. Otherwise, we're going to just.
But, but there's a good chance it can only be for one year, right?
I think you start it now and you look at the board next year, take a look at this and making adjustments as.
Work with it after that.
Right.
I, I have huge concerns and I had a great conversation with Mrs. Sorder today, trying to meet with some parents in the science department in August to move forward. You know, MBU has solid science staff. They had a solid science program when they took this step. I forget what they call this stuff. When they took that step, in my opinion, it was a huge step back. And now we're doing these little baby steps. And that presentation was a very wonderful presentation with flexible pathways and personalized learning roadmaps. And basically, this program has blocked those roads for kids that know they want college and healthcare careers. and healthcare careers. Because as a freshman and a sophomore, you're, you're stuck in classes, the, the curriculum, um, is not at an adequate level, um, not at adequate levels. Um, so you block that path, and you can't say, "It's flexible, but you can't do this." You know, English department, you can take accelerated in AP, you can do it in social science. You can't do it in science, and that's not fair. And I think, um, and the other, the Science 9, 10, 11 are boring. You know? Um, and, and I, I think we can work with the science department, but, you know, she's had to put up with this for three years. It's not okay.
So, Kim, so what's, what's your feeling on what's presented on this paper?
I, I think it's a good baby step forward.
Yeah.
But I think more needs to be done for this fall. Um, I talked to, you know, I, I have a small group of parents I've been emailing discussing this, because I think we can all be part of the solution. And that's what I want. I want us all to be part of the solution. I'm not blaming anybody, but there's a problem and let's fix it. So one of the parents, uh, emailed me back and said, "My son had the perfect schedule for the sophomore year, had everything scheduled in there. They realized he didn't have Science 10. So now he can't take French 3 because he has to take Science 10. And so his plan is to take, take a year off from French and try to take French 3 as a junior." That's not fair.
So the question is, we take baby steps now or we go back to the drawing board and come back in the August board meeting or something else?
I want to go back to Kim's question, like, okay. So don't we have an appeal process that will allow that student to go to his guidance house or her guidance house and say, "This is what's happening with my foreign language. Can I get a pass on Science 10?" Am I misreading the whole appeal process?
Can I add something? It's not just one student. It's like entirely a good majority of students who want to do other things, and they're stuck at 9, 10, and 11.
So she had a classmate, um, she had some friends down to camp for the end of the school year, and so there was a handful of kids there. So I asked her, "What did you guys learn in Science 11?" They laughed. I said, "What did you learn in Science 10 and 9?" And they were like, "It was a joke." So one of her classmates said, "You know, I was able to fit in Science 11, um, half year chemistry, and I, and I'm not sure about anatomy." But she can't take AP Bio because she's going to give the full year of chemistry in this year. She's a senior next year.
Science is holding us back more than helping us. It is making us have blocks instead of furthering our education. We can't do extra, like, chemistry, anatomy, physiology, all this stuff, because we have to do a certain subject that we're not learning anything or intrigued by at all. And we're, we're stuck in that position.
It, it sounds more like a curriculum. I mean, it's, I think part of it is having options and flexibility, but if, if 9, 10, 11 are doing nothing, then why do we have the curriculum the way it is? You know, it seems like, you know, we, we tried this next generation thing, it sounds like it's not working. I mean, should we be asking...
It's certainly not working forever.
The curriculum director would reevaluate this and see what is a better option. And if that's, I think that's, at least we'll take care of part of it.
Right. I guess the challenge, the challenge is trying to make that happen in the next two months or the next two weeks.
Well, yeah, of course, but I mean, you know, yes, at some point.
How long have we known about this? Three years now, right, before school starts?
Yeah. Three years. And, and I understand, you know, but we can't keep pushing it down the road. It wasn't fair to her, it wasn't fair to her classmates, and it's not fair to the classmates coming up. And it's not fair to the community. We have employers looking for qualified students. They need a solid science and math and English base. And, and I don't care if, um, you know, I took ag science, I took the mechanics class. Great hands-on classes, if you were excited to learn things, you know. She never, she came home and was like, "How much longer do I have to take this class?"
All right. There's a school buy option for anybody to test out. A student comes and says, "I can, I know I was in Science 10, I'll take the exam, and I'll get a certain, whatever we think is appropriate."
Even if they made it a half-year course, it's not offered. For, for sophomore, you have Science 10, and your only option is a half-year of CP Bio.
Which one?
Previously, it was a full year of CP Bio. It's not offered anymore.
I'd ask more and more in CP Bio than any of my Science 9, 10, or 11s.
Donna, in answer to your question, that's part of the proficiency-based, uh, standards approach. I don't think we're there yet to be able to say, but if you can demonstrate, I'll just give you the, uh, a more dramatic example. If a student can demonstrate proficiency of all high school courses by the time, the end of their junior year, in a true proficiency-based approach, you can graduate at the end of your junior year rather than the end of your senior year. We're not there yet, but that's, that's an approach that, um, is in place for schools that, that are finally at that level. Uh, I'm going to recommend that we table this for now, because I don't think we're prepared to make a decision tonight.
What does tabling mean?
Tabling means...
They get pushed out and nothing happens until August?
Means that administrators take another look at this, so they come back to the board in the August meeting, uh, with a, with a recommendation.
Will they do that without any guidance from the school board?
I think that it would make sense to have a, um, some interested parents, maybe those who are here tonight, uh, to work with administrators on this.
Now, which administrators would be the best ones to tackle that issue?
That would be the new curriculum coordinator, which we are in the process of hiring.
Just science, also curriculum.
Absolutely.
Science, uh, department leader, maybe?
And Ms. Sorder has, has, we are working towards an August meeting, um, with parents and stuff, but it can't just be one of these, "This looks great, and let's, you know, implement it next year, next year."
And as the parent of freshmen coming into this, I have concerns about the time that my daughter's going to spend, two blocks of time that may indeed be considered wasted time. She has opted to take the, um, earth and space science add-on because she knew she wanted more, but that she had to juggle and make choices about, you know, maybe taking an art class that she couldn't take because she wanted that science. And that's not a fair choice to make kids take either. And this next generation curriculum might be perfect fit for some kids who don't want to dive deep into the science field. I've worked in the science field for 30 years now. I used to work, when I worked for, um, White Nutritionals, there was a learn-to-earn program. We went, you know, uh, technical people went into the schools, and actually, we were encouraging kids to take all the math and science that they could, uh, so that we would be getting better kids, you know, more college-bound kids out of the high schools. And I don't know what happened to that program, but, I mean, this is a great thing that you guys are doing. Um, and I don't think it's, maybe you can run them side by side. Here I am, the one keeps saying, "Well, run them side by side," but you, you're trying to fit a whole bunch of kids into one, one mold, and it doesn't work that way. So it, it might be a great program, Science 9, 10, and 11, for some kids who are, just need to get their science requirement in, but those kids who want to go on to a STEM program or anything else need to have the opportunity to take the full year, chemistry, physics, and AP, AP Bio, all of that. They should, they should have that opportunity.
I know we're talking just about science here, but I think, uh, something very similar is, uh, with the math program as well. I've had, uh, parents come to me at ball games, and they've got a, a student in the fourth grade in Franklin and a, a child in the seventh grade, and they have the same exact math homework. Now, how does that happen? Where one child in the seventh grade is doing the same exact word problems and, and equations as the fourth grader in Franklin. I, I think we should have a meeting in July back there.
Yes. I think we need a board meeting in July. You know, don't, don't skip out. We, we've got a lot coming on, we've got a new superintendent, and, and I, I don't think we need to take July off.
If we, if we meet in August to discuss whatever committee or administration decides, I think it'd be too late to implement anything.
I appreciate that. So...
It's going to be incredible to implement anything, you know, based on my experience with scheduling. I don't know how we, we do everything we do for children first, but I do, Jay, am I wrong with the schedules of kind of work for next year?
We have, uh, since this has gone out, we've had sixteen or now seventeen as of yesterday, uh, students who will be in Grade 11 next year who have opted for, and are eligible and have opted for this opportunity.
So you can schedule them.
And it is, and, and not that it's a bad thing, but it has certainly already created, uh, the need to, uh, open up additional seats in some of these courses, because when the schedule was built back in April, it was built upon what was being, uh, signed up for at that time. And obviously, those have changed. And so, you know, um, I'll use chemistry as an example. The electric chemistry classes, which were, uh, which had seats of probably 17 and 18 are now into the low twenties. And, uh, I know that we, if you, the by 41, we've gutted the chemistry room, and it's being rebuilt again this summer, um, as the numbers can, if the numbers should continue to go up, it, it will present a, a logistical problem.
And I, my point is, and we don't need to address this, we sure did, I just, I'm thinking of schedule. And, and you do most of your work in April, and you spend the summer ironing it out, taking in any problems that you have. If you begin to majorly drastically change a section, it's going to throw everybody's schedule off at some point. Uh, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure the community are really happy about that either. At least that's my experience. You start dickering with one section, it tends to throw everybody else, unless you can just isolate it to one department, which usually can't perform. At least that's my experience. So, I, you know, I, I definitely think we need to discuss it. I'm just, I'm, I'm wondering how, if we made a major change, how we would implement that without just disturbing most schedules. Yeah?
What science do most freshmen take? Um, if, if it wasn't Next Gen, they're taking either Earth Science or...
Or CP Bio.
Or CP Bio. Okay. Isabel took CP Bio as a freshman. So you have, you already have your classes and your blocks set for these sciences. So separate your kids into who wants to take the Next Gen course, and they're not all sitting in one classroom anyways. And you have a teacher that teaches the Next Gen to those who want to take the Next Gen, and you have the, the next block or however, I don't exactly how it all works, a teacher. You have them teach another course that you throw all those kids that want that CP Bio course.
And this does sound like it's a meeting all its own, right? That's what I think. Cause I...
The administration needs an opportunity to really, you know, I am listening, and I may have thoughts, but I am not speaking with Jen about the reasons for the curriculum changes. I can make some assumptions about the next generation science standards that we all have to, um, all our students are assessed on, and that the curriculum has been reformatted to really maximize how much is expected of our students. But those are, I don't know any of the specifics around it. It makes sense as if the community and the board wants to hear some more about it and what the plans are. I agree that if the entire curriculum needs to be revamped, it's not something you can do in July for students or, or for teachers, but we should at least hear what the proposal is, what the feedback is, what next steps are, uh, and, and see if we can have this meeting in July that's a little deeper on it.
Sounds like that could be one of your first projects.
Sounds like it's going on the list. Yes. But I'd be very interested to find out all of that.
Donna?
Well, I would like to request this young lady and a friend that she was talking about. I'd like to know what science courses they feel they need to have before they graduate. Now, we don't need to do it now, but think about it, talk with them, and say, "What?" And I don't need to specify, but before I graduate, these are the science courses I would like to have, okay? And then that's our, our chore or our challenge or opportunity to find out how to do that. Uh, and I haven't, as a board member here, but I have been involved in school administration for a few years, and those students might get a chance to come here eight weeks next year, next summer to take a course, because school days aren't long enough anymore to get to its all-in-all. You see that? So, so that would be, and you can send it to, to me personally, or you go through the superintendent's office, send it to the superintendent, and she'll send it out to all the board members.
It's not that the days aren't long enough. I think it's just that they're being mandated to take courses that they don't feel are beneficial at all.
And next summer, her classmates will be graduates.
What's that?
Next summer, her classmates will be graduates.
Oh, they could come next, uh, summer, we could do postgraduate. Seriously, there are schools that do postgraduate courses this summer.
There are. It's another scheduling boundary.
Oh, that's, that's their choice. We give them the good choices.
But immediately to address the need on the table, that if we do this, we implement this, and we discuss in July what we want to do on a wider level, that would at least, you know, settle some thinking, "I can move into what I need to move into," and then look at, you know, the kids, the young people that are coming up, and what they need to do similarly.
Is that a true statement, that with the flexibility, at least you can, you know, get the majority of what you need to be forward?
This, this has already happened, you know, this letter's gone out. So, you know, we don't need to prove it at this point.
All right. So we have a plan?
It sounds like a plan, sounds like, uh, the right people, the two Mr. Hartman and, uh, Ms. Ms. Gretchen Ball will, uh, make things happen, get the right people on board and invite concerned parents and students. And I think that, you know, we have to start the ball rolling in the right direction for sure.
Should we set a date for July?
Well, I think our July meeting, I think, we were going to talk about that anyway, and I think that our regular, uh, Thursday, Thursday in July makes sense if it works for people. Uh, but as far as this other science thing, I, I would encourage that to be kind of a committee-type meeting and try to come up with some sort of, uh...
No, I, I, not, not, not the logistics that had to do it as far as, like, what's the path forward.
Right, right.
My guess is at some point, we have a decision to make for it as well. If those are available at this July meeting...
Right, right. So if they could, if this committee we're talking about could meet before that, and maybe more than once.
So you're looking at July 19th, if you're in the same sequence.
I, I can't...
I'll be in there.
I have to...
Well, we can, we can, uh...
They'll be good to schedule it right now, so people have it.
Um, twenty-six, well, any, I mean, any day, it doesn't have to be a Saturday. Are there any other boards meeting that we know of? Any other meetings?
I think he's talking about it.
And they're usually a Wednesday?
Uh, Thurs, well, Thursdays, what do, what...
Oh, yeah.
What we're talking about, I've been wanting to...
I think that, uh, this is going to be a tougher one to schedule because you have more people, you've got parents, you've got a larger board, so you can decide, I'm not in the "we" anymore. If you can decide what, what date you would like to have it, I think it makes sense to...
Right. I'm not sure the board, I'm not sure it has to be a board meeting. I'm thinking it's going to be more a committee-type meeting. And that way you can get more, uh, people from the school, Jim Daly and Thinking, Jen Deser, or a new curriculum director, or a new superintendent.
I don't know if this is an administrative issue or an administrative issue.
And that way you can get more people from the school, Jim Daly and Thinking, Jen Desloir, a new curriculum director, or a new superintendent.
I don't know if this is an administrative issue or an actual,
Exactly, exactly. This, this is, this isn't really a board issue. That isn't a board issue. We'd like to fix it, but you gotta give us a suggestion.
So I'm taking the direction that we should have a committee of administration and of interested parties and do some brainstorming and then report out at your next board meeting.
Yes. And the next board meeting is the twenty-sixth better than the nineteenth?
For other people?
I heard three. No, it was right off quickly.
For a board meeting?
Yeah, for a board meeting.
Yeah. I thought I heard that the group was going to be, and then they would report out the August meeting.
Well, I think, I think we, we were talking about a committee that it would probably be a good idea to have a July meeting. Anyway, then the worst that could happen is we have a short July meeting. I've never seen that, but. So I'm willing to have one of the, if you wanna stick with the Thursday night, twenty-sixth. Does that get you back in town, Don?
Nope.
You will be.
I've been doing this for forty years, but I've changed.
You must be tired of it then.
I love it. I love it. You've never had enough lobster.
I wish you either.
All right, let's, let's shoot for the twenty-sixth. It sounds like we got at least,
Seven o'clock?
Well, yeah, seven o'clock, I guess.
And that'll be more on the report after the break issues.
That'll be part of it, right? We'll have our regular, I suspect we'll have our check warrants and our regular business, but that'll be our focus, to do that. Then something has to happen before the twenty-sixth.
So the committee will meet before then?
Committee will meet before then, maybe daily. So there's an answer. But you're not on it.
That's okay. I will, I'll be discussing.
All right. Does that sound like a good plan to start?
Sounds like a good start.
Okay. All right. And I trust it'll be a part of it.
I'll be there.
Good. All right.
Before you leave, Dr. Dennis, I just wanna follow up with one question. I think it came to the break earlier. When we looked at the proposal that has been drafted for this coming year, there was discussion and/or teacher recommendation, but also a change to the numerical and letter recommendation to percentile of eighty-five percent for the, is that correct?
My suggestion was if they had to have a percent in there, that would be eighty-five percent for the, however you wanna state it, I don't know.
How are the grades issued now? They're letter grades right now.
They're just letter grades, they're not percent grades.
Correct.
But doesn't the policy say ninety percent or better?
Right. So basically, if you go back to what we've worked with in previous years, an A minus was the lowest of the nineties. Traditional B was probably eighty-five. A B plus would be an eighty-eight and so forth.
Right, an eighty-four, eighty-six would be,
I'm just, I'm just looking for a direction to take back.
But we're not working in percents anywhere.
What's that, Rick?
You're not working in percents anywhere.
Well, we're gonna be moving out of percents pretty quickly within the next two years, that's for sure.
My understanding was that you were looking, went down to an eighty-five, or a B, let's call it a B.
Well, somebody was concerned about a lower student trying to get into it.
Right. But I think, I think it was a lower level.
Yes, you're in the reach, and I threw the B level.
Right. And the B, B was only gonna work with teacher recommendation, if I understand. So it's not anybody with a B. It's just, if you've got a B and the teacher says that you're okay to do it.
And it works no lower than an eighty-five with the teacher recommendation.
Is that, is that my, that was my understanding. Is that,
What we'd expect is a ninety or better.
Sure, sure. Right. So if that's what we were talking about, then I guess that's the direction to go. Looking for a ninety or an A minus, but the B works if the teacher says it's okay.
With recommendation.
With the recommendation.
That's it.
All right. So we're good on that.
All right.
Thank you. We're coming. Thank you, Richard.
I see, I see at seven-ten, we're supposed to end up at seventeen minutes. Seven-ten yet? Do I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of May seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen? Do I have that motion? Motion by Eric. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Greg. Any questions, comments, or concerns about those minutes?
Some changes, Dennis, on page one, under people who were present at the last meeting, under students, it should be Cassidy Dunphy, D U N, D H Y. On page two, the last full paragraph, under the principal's report, Jim Daly is D A L Y. And on page three, the first, well, I guess the first full paragraph after the principal's report, while Elise would be honored that she would have been at the meeting, is actually probably Kim. And I think that's all that I found going through.
I would also add that in that same page, the next full paragraph, the visitor, that was Peter Magnet. It just says, be a visitor.
Be a visitor, yeah.
Peter Magnet. He's up on the visitor's list.
Oh.
All right. Anything else? All right. Hearing nothing else. All in favor of approving the minutes of May seventeenth, independent? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it. Motion carries. All right. Finance report. We'll start with the check warrants. We'll start the vote. As I entertain a motion to approve check warrant report for the dates, well, two thousand and eighteen to June one, two thousand and eighteen, in the fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-five cents. Do I have that motion?
I'll move it. John will go. I'll second.
Motion by John, seconded by, where do we go? Don?
Don and Don.
Any questions, comments, concerns? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it. Motion carries. Entertained a motion to approve check warrant for the date June second, June eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, in the one hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. Do I have that motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Richard, seconded. Don, seconded by Don. Any questions on that? Hearing none. All clear to the motion. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it. Motion carries. All right. Becky, we have two items for you. Which would you like to start?
Well, I'll start with the financial report. Very briefly, I emailed this out in your other board materials. Presently projecting that we're gonna underexpend our budget by about a little over five percent. When we were developing this year's budget, we were negotiating both union agreements in terms of wages and insurance benefits. We were looking to increase our salary scale at that time. So at this, you know, we've had some staffing changes. I think the health insurance came in less than what we had been worried about when we were negotiating. The other factor in our under expenditures is our special ed assessment at the ESU level. We've had changes in some tuition that have saved us quite a bit of money. So it's all good news at that point. So I guess that's basically why I wanted to let you know, is things are looking good for this fiscal year that we're finishing up. The next item is the driver's ed car. I had sent out an email, an electronic thing with your board materials, with re-proposed costs for a comparable vehicle that we purchased this year. After I sent the memo out, we did get a one-line price from another dealership in the district. I'm not sure that that fourth price is complete. I need to be sure that it would include adapting that driver's ed vehicle with the independent instructor controls, braking, and that sort of thing. So I've been trying to reach that dealership and I have not gotten to talk to someone yet at this point. So I don't know if you want to approve the purchase of the vehicle at the lowest cost. And, you know, I will continue to try to reach this dealership to see if this, because it is a little bit lower than what the lowest price in this memo. So before I put that out there, I wanna be sure it's complete and that there's not some other costs that are gonna be incurred.
Knowing that we're gonna meet in July now, does that make a difference? Can we,
We could, we could table this until July or,
It won't be until, until school starts, so why don't we do that? We'll let you do the rest of your research and,
Then we'll likely be tabled with the second part of that, which was the financing piece.
Right, right.
I'll have to contact the banks hopefully closer to that July twenty-sixth meeting and see what's,
Can we accept the financial part?
I'm sorry?
Can we accept the financial part?
Well, I have this, I have this fourth quote as well, that I'm not sure is complete. If you want to authorize for the work with the board chair to, once I get that information.
I'm not going to, because what I heard, the tenor of your July meeting is, is really about curriculum. And this is a decision that can be made tonight. It can be made with a motion, something like what I have up here. Do you authorize purchase of a new driver's education car at the lowest cost, or lowest bid cost? And what you're doing is you're giving legal authority to Becky. But once she has the culmination of that latest bid in, it gives her the direction to be no more than what, what she's presented to you, and it could be less.
Well, we've, in the past, we've been cognizant about supporting local people. And obviously, we just had, you know, some committee on that concern citizen. And granted, we weren't aware of that, so we didn't have that decision. But I think in this particular case, looking at the bidders, that may be, you know, it's, it's pretty close. It may, you know, we might like to fracture the dealership, so, I mean, I,
This is another local bid.
I would think that, I mean, the not to exceed financing, I think we'd be able to prove that.
Right, not to exceed our current lowest price.
All right.
So I mean, it'd be pretty simple just to prove, you know, once, once Becky has the final numbers, we'll,
I just wanna have a comfortable level that this price is still a bit lower, it was the final cost, and there's not gonna be something tacked on afterward that might put it over.
And if we don't do something for two months, will this financing information change?
It could. It changes quite.
So that was my concern. If we didn't make a decision on the car, then the financing would, could change. It might stay the same order. The numbers might change. No, I'm fine with that, knowing, knowing the dealerships that we're talking about, that I, I think, yeah.
I'll certainly communicate that with you.
Right.
We have three bids. Do you have three?
I have, I have three sets of pricing, yes, on the same, same vehicle.
I think we should act immediately.
All right, so the motion, motion be authorized. Becky, do we want?
I think the chair of the board,
Becky and the chair of the board to review the final answer, whether the numbers are in. And make the decision.
The decision based on what, though?
Well,
Based on lowest cost.
Yeah.
Well, again, I guess, from my perspective, if the numbers are as close as they would, I prefer it to be similar.
Right.
So which may not be the lowest cost.
Well, like, say, our lowest, the dealership here with the lowest cost, include, is local, but it also includes the modification.
Are they the ones that include?
The lowest memo does include that.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood. I thought they were the ones that not include.
Right. Has, has given me a one-line email with the prices lower than that, but I don't know if that includes the modifications.
Is he or she local?
So we're trying not to use names because we don't have all the information, but we could tell you later and it might.
But it did sound as if the lowest bid so far is a local dealer.
Yes.
The one we're researching is also another local dealer. So to answer your, one of,
Right.
It's only be locally, but one or the other.
He's either gonna be lower, then he's gonna get a bid, or he's not gonna be lower than the guy that's,
I'd be willing to go with the lowest local.
Okay, there you go.
That sounds pretty good.
That was,
That's what we have, the lowest bid, as reviewed by the business manager and board chair, with consideration for local businesses.
I'm gonna ask, because of a tractor incident, what is local? Is it Franklin, Swanton, and Highgate? Is that local?
It's a business within our district.
Okay, but is that local? I think that, because that, that can get you in trouble. So I think we should define. Local as being Franklin, Highgate, Swanton, not Sheldon or Albert because of some tuition bits here? All right. No, I just wanna clarify it because I don't wanna be back here like we were another time.
Good point. Good point. All right. So we've got the motion up there. When's adding in the, within district card? So, is somebody comfortable making that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Richard made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Colin Robb. Any further discussion?
We can define local as sending towns, if you like.
Yes, I hear you.
Greg, you say extending towns, which would be,
Could be tuition.
Georgia, if something like that, could be St. Olm.
No, I would, I would say with the,
I, I just say, I just heard somebody say it could be sending towns.
All right. Good, good points. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it. Motion carries. All right, so now,
You want along with that, are you in a place where you want to approve the borrowing rates?
I think, I think that's, I think we should. I think everybody's got that in front of them, but, three different, three local bank, all three local banks. Three, yeah, three banks. They got hold of some, People's Trust Bank was the lowest. And we, we are doing quite a lot of business with People's Trust, so I think it would make sense to have a motion to approve People's Trust as the lender for that favor's impact.
So will.
Motion by Don. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Hearing none. All clear to the motion. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it. Motion carries.
The last item has to do with, well, our bond bank application was approved, our two-point-nine million bond issue. I sent out an electronic data with your board materials, a little lengthy document that had all the borrowing and resolution documentation that goes along with our bond issue borrowing. So I have that paperwork here for signature tonight to approve and signature. If any of you read that information, have questions.
Any questions?
Pretty much well over the show.
It really, it really is, right?
You wanna be creative. That's not the document.
So is there a full board signature on that, or?
There's one document that needs just the board chair to sign. Which one is? It's actually the actual loan agreement. It has one line for board chair, so if the board chair is authorized to sign that on behalf of the board. The other documents that require board signature require a majority of the board to have everyone here to sign that.
I guess, I have anything in motion to, I guess, have we anything in motion to authorize the board chair sign the loan agreement with the, with the bond bank? Is that correct, General Manager?
So will.
Is I...
Motion by Greg, did you second that, Don?
I'm not until I find out if you'll be financially responsible if this thing fails.
We're not going to discuss it, do you second it? So, all right.
I will second it.
Well, that's a dig pretty deep to get the 2.9 million. I appreciate your concern.
I'm just glad you signed it.
Any other discussion on that motion? All in favor of the board chair sign? Here none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. So what was the other one that needed those?
Well, the, the other documents include, you know, a resolution and certificate, municipality tax certificate, bond. Treasurer's already signed the documents that needed to sign, so those three have multiple lines for the board to...
Associate documents.
Yes, the remaining bond issued documents that required execution.
It's open to see it all. Say that again, nicely worded up there.
The remaining bond issued documentation...
To do what?
Be approved or, and, and probably executed. I don't like to use that word, but that's...
Remaining bond documents. All right, who made that motion?
Greg.
Greg made the motion.
Thought he made the motion, I'll second.
Well, that was, well, that was the, that was the board chair signing. This is a different one. The remaining bond documents have signed by the board.
Specifically, the loan agreement is, is how, you've authorized the board chair to sign the loan agreement, then the remaining documentation is to be signed by a majority of the board.
Well, I'm fine with Greg having made it. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Richard. Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. There it is. Did that have anything to do with Becky, or is that...
Well, yes, it does, because we're using it. Becky always has her fingers in the tail. Side, side comment that you didn't need to hear.
We're talking about reallocating, reallocating funds. Reallocating funds for the gym.
Yeah. Let, let me give some context here. So, work is underway in the gym. If you happen to be in there this week, you're going to see that they're very quickly becoming no bleachers at all. And I just want to do a special recognition to Dennis Boucher Construction Company, that on a volunteer basis has been in the gym for three days with workers from his, his organizations, as well as some of our facilities people ripping out the old bleachers. It is quite a job. We're retaining, retaining the yellow pine, the kickboards, the seats, all of that. Dennis is graciously going to store that, keeping it dry on his, on his farm for future use. We've got some future use in mind. We heard some more suggestions from other schools that have repurposed bleachers for different learning opportunities for, for students. And we're open to all, all kinds of suggestions. In the project itself, some of the replacements, we, we have some really old batting cages. We have to do something different with the backstop, excuse me, with the, with the backboard for basketball when it comes up. It has to move in a different direction, so the mechanism has to be installed differently. And bottom line, I'm just going to read you the cost for this and the items. We're talking about as we refinish the floor, putting in volleyball stanchions and grommets, so that those three volleyball nets can be attached safely. The side folding backstop, rather than going straight back and up into the rafters, it will go to the side to accommodate a batting cage that will be, let's say, more expertly installed so that it's not dangerous, it's no longer a safety hazard. And a divider curtain. If you recall, we hired a new physical education teacher this year, and this allows us more options for classes and choices for students in physical education class. Also, everything, not only are the bleachers coming out, but the scoreboards are coming off, all the banners are off, so that the gymnasium can be painted. We've chosen not to do the ceiling. We worked out something different that we, we feel is the way to go. So we're talking a total of, of the volleyball system install is 10,500. The side folding backstop is 10,250. The batting cage is 13,675. The divider curtain replacement is 17,325. And the scoreboards are 11,000. Again, the scoreboards are so old, you can't get replacement parts for them now, and it's starting to die. Makes a lot of sense that if we're going to pull it off the wall, we replace it with something that is current. That total is 62,750. The proposal is that we take that from the unexpended funds this year and, and handle it financially that way.
Now, there's one other factor in there, the, the section of bleachers that's on the band room end of the gym, we've, unless that's changed, I, I heard that we decided we're not replacing that set of bleachers. That set's coming out, we don't use them very often, so that section is out, it's not being replaced, so that's a savings of, I don't remember the number, but there was a, there was a price on that that Paul told me, and I can't remember what that number was, but there, there's one section of bleachers we're not replacing, so it's going to be a savings on the bleachers, which is going to be applied towards these extras, the thick...
Was the painting, the number should say cost...
What?
I think we should do it, but I just wondered if there's 62 or whatever. Let's get this...
The painting, I think, was...
Already managed it?
I think, well, I know the bleachers are part of the bond.
Bleachers are, right.
You remembered it?
The painting, for some reason, came in at 25, I'm trying to remember exactly.
Sounds right.
It had also included some more kind of ceiling.
Yeah, there, there was, that's right. Because originally, we had money in the bond for the ceiling. We said it was too expensive.
Yep.
We did another option, and we're able to keep that at a lower cost than originally was planned for the bond. So the wash is not going to be 62,000 and change more, something considerably less than that. The issue is, because we've got everything ripped out, we're doing the repainting, we're doing the, the new bleachers, it, it makes sense to get the gym set up and replace some of the items that are worn out, and that you can't get replacement parts for. Do it right the first time and get it done.
Dennis, now, what are those bleachers? Are they, are they switch, automatic switch, are they a mule, or what are they?
Well, there's an electric, an electric motor to them. I don't know, you're talking two different electric things, I don't know which it is.
Do you know?
My understanding, Richard, is that they will be, we won't be pulling them in and out anymore.
Yes, so it, it ain't a mule then?
Correct.
It's going to be a regular switch from the 30, the old 30 room there, and just they don't, or is it at each bleacher?
Might be at each set, I believe. Yeah, that's going to be, that will be a continued consultation with board and the installers. I would move approval of those expenses.
I think, I think what we were looking for to pay for those was going to come out of the budget.
These years, we had that discussion.
Unexpected, unexpected, unexpected funds, so...
Which is kind of, which is quite healthy.
Right. My first thought, my first thought was the renewal, reserve, capital reserve fund would have been perfect for all those things, just replacing those things. But they are new, you know, new volleyball system, new batting cage system. Rather than have somebody question us on that, we've got money and carryover that we could use for that, so I think we needed the motion to reallocate funds from the budget, uh, unexpended funds in the budget to cover these gym accessories.
I, I would just call them equipment replacements. We're going to be having them now. The issue is that they, they need upgrading.
Becky, we spent all the carryover that we have to, we will be... The reserve fund, we've, we've spent the amount we need to...
Yes, he's, he's on target to spend the, what we allocated or erased by respect.
And that's, is that for the water line?
It was simple, another project, I don't know.
Dennis, when we first mentioned, we talked about replacement of bleachers, I thought safety was one of the factors, one of the reasons why we were doing it.
Yes.
And if so, this section we decide not to replace, is that any, we're safer?
We're taking them out, we're not replacing it.
It's going to be removed, but not replaced, okay. Nothing there then, right?
They're, they're actually talking about storage.
My misunderstanding.
I look at quasi on that. No, no, sorry. Taking them out, not replacing them. So, yeah, they're already gone. They were one of the first ones gone, so I would not want to put them back together. I, I don't know that I could.
Tough enough taking them out.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it would take some, we'd have to ask some science students to put them back together.
So I'm going to have to do it with that?
All right. So did we get the motion down? Motion to reallocate funds from the, unexpended funds from the budget.
Do we have to put those particular line items?
No, not lines, I think, I don't believe so, no.
And why do you assess that assessment? For unexpended insurance benefits, considerations, or, I mean, there, there are places to go, I don't know if we want to...
I don't know, we've done this before, I guess, I don't remember ever having a specific.
I know we have the capability of doing this, I guess my concern is where do we draw the line on this stuff?
Right.
I mean, I, I don't want the perception that we're using carryover as slush funds.
Exactly, exactly.
So, I mean, that's, that's my concern is that, like, okay, well, why don't we just by general, why don't we just do this, why don't we just do that?
The bottom line is...
This is a little bit of slippery slope, is my concern.
Here's the key that I think makes that rational decision, is that you could use your capital reserve for that, it certainly qualifies for it. Given the scrutiny we've had in the past, I'm choosing to recommend not doing that, even though it's perfectly legitimate. It makes a lot more sense to use some of those unexpended funds. We had a lot of variables this year that it could have been the other way really, really easy, and it's not, so that's, that's why I think there's rationale to do it that way.
And we're well under the threshold that the voters approve, so I wouldn't suggest it otherwise.
I like it because it ties into our bond. We're doing the bond, and this just came out of the pool, we're going to do that, I would say, well, it should be, but all ties into it.
I know, but there's a ton of other things we've, we've dropped off the list because we tried to chat, no.
And they need to suggest them, like...
But that's the thing, I mean, so, yeah, do we just keep adding more stuff to this carryover?
Yeah, you put a net and then everything in, Don, but what about the track? You know, there's a lot of things on that track, you need more before the net and then hanging in the gym.
Track was a part, I, I wanted to support the track, but it wasn't part of the bond.
It, it was, at the beginning, it was, Don. It, it didn't make the cut, but now we're putting things in that maybe if it was different, like a, a net, a, a net going up and stuff, a petition going in, none of that was mentioned until tonight. So, this is so, now we're forgetting about the track, and we're doing other things. I didn't know, Don.
That's a good point, Richard, and I know we've had this discussion for years about carryover.
Because in the last three years, we've talked a lot about that track, you know, and, and then we get here this tonight. I didn't know nothing about what was going on.
That's a good point, but I think because it's not going to take much to finish the gym.
Well, and we'll ever go back to it.
It's going to be a done thing at this point.
We'll never go back to it, if we don't do it now.
But my question is, are we going to go, keep going back to the track?
Well, I hope so.
I hope so, too.
Well, we started, that's our plan.
You know, I'm not going to lay off that.
Right.
We shouldn't have to go back to it.
Didn't James speak to us tonight about the fact that, you know, we, we're working on the track?
Right, right, there is work being done this summer.
We just need more work.
Yeah, it's going to take a lot of, it's going to take a lot of money out there.
Five years.
All right, good discussion, great points. I guess, is there any more, or should we go?
Did we need a second?
Richard, you made it, or somebody else did? All right, so this is the reality funds, so, all right. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, motion carries.
Before we leave, Anna, just to, like it in the record, about Dennis and his workers donating time, it was extraordinary. I think it should be duly noted in minutes that that took place. A special thank you from the board to Dennis.
I guess I'll make one comment, that I've been planning on bringing it Sunday afternoon to work on it, so if anybody wants to see how it happens, they're welcome to come down and join.
You, you mentioned using it for future projects, I mean, is there already a list of things that...
Very minimal list, from what I see, there's many, many boards, and so if, if anybody has any idea, I don't want anybody, or I don't want everybody to forget that there are those boards available, because I'm, I'm going to store them, I'm finding to store them, but I'd like to have people use it, too.
Well, I mean, Don mentioned, advised to me, I was going to sell them because there is a market for them.
Right.
Not that I would afford that method, so, however, I think we need to, you know, as you say, not forget about it.
I guess timing was, timing was the thing, and by the time we went through the, nobody's got time to do it right now. Just advertising doesn't sound like it takes a lot of time, but I didn't, I didn't think it was going to happen, so I was, you know, storing them.
So Dennis, they're talking about putting a storage on the end of the gym, right? Where those old bleachers are, why can't you use those boards? That's what we did in Richmond, we used, we made a, with those boards.
That's a great idea.
Pure genius, Richard, pure genius. That's a great idea.
Did you volunteer to build that, Richard, to build the boards?
A lot.
Did you know what Richard said? We heard some options today at another meeting, and Julie has some options of what St. Olens did.
Oh, well, it's a smaller gym, but when they took out the bleachers a few years ago, they first, students identified one thing they wanted to do with them, and they built benches between, in the hallway, they have banks of walkers, and then it was space, so they built benches with them for kids who were having a hard time, you know, they could sit, or just anybody could sit and work quietly, a lot of kids work in the hallways. So they started with that, and then they actually ended up with a program, working with kids who needed a lot of hands-on work, and they used the old shop area, and they actually started with that lumber, creating projects, and it's grown and grown, now they, you know, they've used up all that lumber, but now they're doing other things, and they have a business, and they're selling cutting boards, and they made the sign for the front of the school, so it was, it just, it all started with the, with the leftover bleachers. So, there's so much that kids, and if, if you can, if there's a market and you can sell some of it, that's a possibility, too.
I think some, the first market would be the Alumus, one of those woodworking kits, and they could just autograph it.
Some of them have been audrafted on the backside.
I'll bet they have.
I bet they have, too.
I haven't put your name on there yet, Richard, so lucky.
Bring some holy water for the...
There you go.
Yeah, let's clean that off before we do the storage.
The last thing under... And the last thing under financing facilities, given that we're in the recognition mode, this is Becky Hart's last meeting supporting this board next year. Laura McAllister will be your business manager, and we'll be at meetings. And I think it makes perfect sense to thank Becky for many, many years of service to this board. She's not leading us, she's just moving into a different role. And Laura will be working with us, so it would be appropriate to ride into the, the minutes. Some special appreciation.
How many years, Becky, though?
In the business manager role, it's almost twenty.
Business manager.
In Franklin Northwest, about twenty-seven.
Thank you. So since she's only in your office, or Julie's office, you can be a consultant when you need her.
From afar.
She's not doing it.
I think her evening, her evening hours are going to cut back.
That's all right. She could work during the day, we can always call her.
Well, I work part-time about forty hours.
Right.
You've done a great job.
Appreciate that.
Thanks. Thank you, Richard. So I think unless folks have other questions for, for Becky, I believe that's everything that.
Are the note documents going around?
Oh, sorry, he's talking to me.
She's not leaving.
So here, you all set? You all set?
I believe you all have a copy of the principal's report from the leadership team. Basically a summation of probably the last month of the year. Obviously a lot going on and culminating with the eighth grade celebration last Wednesday evening, and then high school commencement for grade twelve on Friday night to fifteen. So a lot of that is there. If you have any questions on it, I'll be happy to respond to them. The, down at the bottom of the page, hiring update. We've actually had a pretty good spring. The one stumbling block that we're running into right now is filling the vacancy in the Spanish program. We have interviewed multiple candidates. We have not found one yet that, quite frankly, we feel is suitable when we follow up with references. So Jen has put the word out to all of the local colleges, whether it be the University of Vermont, St. Michael's, or the state universities, both here in Vermont and in New York, in an effort to see what they might have in their teacher education programs following graduation and what. On the positive side, the Spanish teacher, Cass Leno, who did leave us when we hired her, she was hired on August the twentieth. And so there's always a leg at the end of the table.
Custodians, where are we with the?
Uh, we are moving, I think, in a very positive direction with custodial staff. We are continuing to get additional applications now. I think especially the change in the, in the benefits package has really attracted people. And in talking to Paul yesterday afternoon, we've got two additional applications that we're going to be going forward on probably the beginning of next week. And I think if that goes well, we'll be within one of being fully staffed with our own.
What that means is we no longer have contract custodians.
Correct.
We signed, signed a kind, signed letter with the association that reinstated the language that full-time employees, two-hundred-and-sixty-day employees get full family coverage. That was in the contract two, two sessions ago. It wasn't in this current one, it was intended to be, it now is, based on that side contract letter.
I think you should retire it.
Anything else?
I just wanted to say, at the graduation, it was extremely well-run and a beautiful event, and just pass on my thanks, I'm sure everybody's thanks for an extremely well-done graduation.
Some great young people there.
Responsibility for how well that ran, sitting right over there.
But I figured, I just figured he would, he would not admit to that.
Actually, actually, the lion's, the lion's share of the credit for that goes to Debbie LaRocque.
Great point. She's got her Becky's name back. Thank you so much for all your hours of putting up with us.
You get a name back.
That's it.
She did a great job of awards night.
Thank you, Becky. All right. So I think the recruiting new board secretary, we, maybe, at least for tonight, may care about, I see the man just spoke it over there, so.
He did, that's for sure.
Side letter I just spoke about, I anticipated having a more substantive legislative report. What I'm going to tell you is, it hasn't happened yet. The legislature tried to override the governor's veto. There is no state budget, and in the state budget is the education funding. Eleven days before the start of the fiscal year, they're going to have to do some scrambling to get it done. I'm going to anticipate that they will. So there's a lot of posturing right now, and really have nothing more to say than watch the news. There was an advocacy piece to reach out to legislators a couple of days ago, but other than that, you might hear something from either myself or Julie. You'll only hear it from me if it's tomorrow, otherwise it's going to be from Julie. So pay, pay attention to your email. It's possible that the last week in June might be a reach out to legislators to let them know what your opinions are, and we'll go from there.
I heard the Senate sent back to the House a budget proposal.
Yes.
That changed it by one cent.
Uh-huh.
And did not change the non-resident tax laws.
Right, right now, the stripe is over the non-residential tax rate.
This is, yeah, but they, and it was a unanimous vote by the Senate.
Yeah. Well, they didn't override, the, the House didn't override the, the governor's veto, and so that's where the buck stops, and we'll see where it goes from here. Last issue, putting out one more plea for the China summer school initiative. We met today with Spiral International Organization. We are within a couple of families from having enough host families. We have twenty-six students coming the third week of July. We have, with three teachers and two grandparents. And the last week of July, we have fifteen Chinese students with two or three teachers, and just need a couple more host families. What I'll share with you is there's a hundred dollars for the week, asking that families take on two, two students from China for housing, and will help with food and transportation. They will be integrated within our summer school program and do some other touring around this part of the state. And the benefit for particularly high school students and families is if you host Chinese students for the summer immersion, for once in the fall and once in the spring, and you have children that are teenage age, it will provide an opportunity for you, for your child or children to go to China with an immersion program going the other way, paid for by the Chinese contingent. So it's a great opportunity to be able to have some cross-cultural learning and experiences. Anyone that's interested should go to the Franklin Northwest website or the MBU website to be able to receive more information from Carol Azad, who's our program coordinator, or Ashley, the person that's actually running this, and let them know what your interest is. And I think that's everything that I, that I have on the superintendent's report. Contracts come later.
Okay.
So I guess we're on to hold the business.
Wait, this is Act Forty-Six update.
Yep, there is. The eighteenth of July, the state board will receive all supervisory unions that did not merge, and it's an opportunity for each SU to advocate for their alternative governance structure. Franklin Northwest put in an AGS for that. The SU board has directed an Act Forty-Six committee to, to refine the message, the advocacy to the state board. The Secretary of Education made a recommendation on June first. The recommendation was to merge Franklin, Highgate, Swanton, and MBU as one board, and to direct Sheldon into Franklin Northeast with a four district merger, that would be Berkshire, Montgomery, Bakersfield, and Sheldon. It would be a pre-K through eight, single board that would operate those four schools. Again, coming back to what the secretary's recommendation is for MBU, it would be a single board that would run Franklin, Highgate, Swanton, and MBU. Two key points, Sheldon is not interested in leaving Franklin Northwest. They're going to be advocating to stay. There is a possible structure that could allow them to stay, but it would be a three-by-one, and the three-by-one would be the, it would be a merger of the Franklin, Highgate, Swanton, and MBU. That would be a modified unified union. Sheldon would be the other side, and there would still be a supervisory union. If it's Franklin, Highgate, Swanton, and MBU alone, there would be no longer any supervisory union board. It would be a single board with a single budget that would run the four schools. And so that's really what's on the table, and the question is, does the state board have the courage to make that move? There are some, quite a few individuals that are going to Newark Elementary School, which is where the state board meeting is scheduled for, on again, July eighteenth. There are other schools throughout the state. There's two other locations, one's Montpelier and one is down Southmore, and there are a few buses getting revved up to go to those as well. So it will be quite a, I don't want to say a spectator sport, but there will be quite a few things, quite a few dynamics going on between the state law that directs the state board to make a decision, and the interest in maintaining local control by those supervisory unions that have not merged.
So what will the role of the SU board be if Sheldon comes in a three-by-one?
I mean, we still have an SU board, and the SU board would have oversight for the modified unified union, which would be the pre-K through twelve board, and Sheldon as a pre-K eight. I'm not saying they would support it, but that's.
Supervisory union budget?
Yes.
So they include the three-town budget and the Sheldon budget?
Yes. Yep. It would be a little bit like what happened in Grand Isle County. You've got a, you've got a new pre-K through six entity of Isle of Mont, of Grand Isle, and of North Hero, and the side was slated to be Albert, and there's still a lot of moving parts with, with that one as well. It just reduces the number of boards, it doesn't totally streamline the district. It's cumbersome because Sheldon is a pre-K eight, and if there's a merger of, I'll just call it the MBU pre-K through twelve, you've got two different governance structures that just don't marry together very well.
So the three member board can make all kinds of decisions, and the SU board can?
Yeah, it would be an interesting dynamic, because technically you'd have three reps from the new MBU pre-K twelve and three reps from Sheldon, so they would have quite a bit more power than what's happening now. But that's not what the state is, is promoting. I'm just giving you some examples of what could emerge and what, what is of interest to Sheldon.
When was the, do we know when the first Act Forty-Six committee is? Because I know that they're meeting again to appear for the.
Right. It was supposed to meet this week. I haven't heard if Bob Berger was able to get that scheduled or not. It'll be warned very shortly so that you'll know when it is. And also changing dynamics, because two of the board members that were on the original Act Forty-Six are, are no longer school board members, so I think they're being invited, but I also think there's some replacements from Sheldon and, I'm trying to think of the other one.
Swanton.
Swanton, that's right.
I was on the Act Forty-Six, we had already taken.
Yep. Well, that means it's not scheduled yet, because you would know.
They're not on it.
No, I think you are. So hold on. Not getting off that easy.
Well, they'll get a notice, can't show up.
You know, the lame duck superintendent doesn't know everything anymore.
It's all right.
Yeah. All right, so that's, I think that is Forty-Six. We already talked about custodian, track we've talked about.
I've heard any more about the defense?
What's the action of defense?
You know, I saw in the paper too, it was listed in there, but I, I didn't think there was any more talk.
Yeah.
What's going on at the track?
Science appeal we've done.
What's going on at the track? No, what's, what's happening?
What is the thirty thousand dollars this summer going to?
Yeah.
The company is coming in with a GPS unit to level it, to make sure that it's specked to qualifications, so that it can be, we can hold track meets on it. They are repairing the, the composition, the aggregate that's in it. Again, I don't have great detail, detail about what's happening in that, but it was in the, it was in the proposal that was presented by the two, the two vendors.
Are they putting a ring in it, around the outside?
Yes, I, I believe that's true.
Metal?
Jay, do you know?
I do not know whether it would be metal or not, Richard.
Should be.
Should be, yeah.
I know they're going to get the shape right, they're going to get the width, it's going to be a little wider, I think, than what it is now.
Because it, it isn't up to par right now.
So they're supposed to make the, the right shape to start with and level it, and I don't remember hearing about the ring, but I'm shocked about it.
Leveled and specked to, to these specifications for what are required to host track meets through the EPA.
So, so are they, are they coming at the end and, and putting like a, a surface for high jump and, and that stuff, or what, you know? Them are the things that I wondered if they, that stuff that talked about.
Yeah.
Like at the end.
I, I remember talking to John Lobston about the long jump pit, and something that's happening with that. I think there's something happening with the shot put circle. I don't know if it's the toe board or what it is, but there's some.
So are they leaving, do you know if they're leaving them where they are, or are they bringing them over to the track? Are they leaving them out and, like one comes out of the baseball field, it's the shop, and then the discus comes out, just as you go down into the trail? Are they staying the same?
I think they are. I, I rode, rode through there with John the other day, and I think the shot put area and the discus area are still going to be in the same, same places they were. I know that there's some upgrade to the long jump pit, the runway, I think. I don't know if he's doing anything with that, but for sure the pit is a little laden with grass and needed, needed some upgrading.
Because I know that discus, well, you have, you're going to have to have a net out there for safety for that discus, because where it flies off the posts, the, the, all we ever used before was just a, for junior highs, just a softball net, we, but that, that ain't going to work for high school.
Okay, we'll look into that. All right. I think we talked about the athletic field fence. I know we talked about it before. The issue is, we had a near miss in a baseball game with a motorcycle. They created some consternation and some, some safety issues. I don't know that we're prepared tonight to talk more about that, other than just let you know that that continues to be an ongoing issue. In executive session, we're going to talk with you about some other land issues that have relevance to, to this, so I think we'll pick that conversation up there. We've had the science appeal. I think I'll finish this with, we've got policy adoption. The context here is that the SU board. The context here is that the SU Board, the protocol is, a committee develops policies and recommends them to the supervisory union board for adoption. That process happened on June sixth. In order to fully finalize policy adoption, it needs to go before each board. The intent is, because the SU Board already did the vetting for the policies and made sure that they're checked with legal counsel, that this board then, in a pro forma action, also adopts the policies. So what I'm going to do is just give you a highlight of each policy, so that you know what it is, and then ask you to consider adopting them as we, as we move forward through this. The first one, and this is different, this is something that didn't go before the SU Board. And this isn't a policy. This is just to inform the board. It's a procedure update. Procedures are direction that administrators have authority to make. And this is an update of the administrative procedure around drugs and alcohol. And I'll tell you where the differences are. Difference is here, what you see in highlight, is on second offense, student will undergo an alcohol and drug assessment within ten days of the incident, and will participate in a treatment program if warranted by the assessment. You'll see that not highlighted, but you'll also see it right here in first offense. So it'll happen in each. I think those were the primary changes. Let me just look. I was thinking there's one other, and it's here. It's that issues could transcend over multiple years. And I think it's right here. Nope, it's not. Let me find it. It's under D.
So while you're doing that, who does the assessment?
We have a number of people. Jay, is that, Steve Messing directs that? Do you want to talk a bit about that while I find this other change?
Were you looking for...
Do we have an independent party do that?
Yes. Usually Champlain Valley does, does the test, the assessment.
They're not, they're the same school year. It's actually, we should say they're sent to test. Is this it? Well, so I'm wondering, is that what you were...
Jay, which Champlain Valley?
They are a certified, they're drug and alcohol, and they will do the assessment. Now, you can, you can have an assessment done elsewhere privately, but they generally tend to be the most available and, and are used, I think predominantly by most schools in Franklin and Chittenden County anyway.
Is that their full title?
Pardon?
Champlain Valley. Is that their full title?
Oh, Julie, you might remember the wrong...
No, she thinks Valley, Drug and Alcohol.
I think so. It's a, it's an acronym. It's CETA or something to that effect. Yeah.
I'll Google it. I can find it for you.
Katie, are you out of battery? Okay. All right. So here's the other change. The bottom line is, it doesn't have to happen all in the same year. That in repeat offenses, third offense can be over multiple years, and it doesn't start anew in the following year. And that's the other change. So it's here in blue, this one here.
All right. So, now you want to do them one at a time, or motions?
Yeah. I guess, I would like to have the board express support here for this. Again, it's an administrative decision, but in state law, boards have responsibility for adopting policy. Administrators have responsibility for creating the procedures that implement that policy. However, boards on, on key procedures can weigh in. And I'm asking you, because of this procedure, it makes sense that the board adopt this not as a policy, but as an administrative procedure. So with those changes, that's, that's what I'd like to turn it back to Dennis for consideration.
So we will entertain a motion to adopt this administrative procedure for student, student alcohol, drug, alcohol, drug, U.S. procedure. Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard, second by Rob. Any discussion?
Why is it called student alcohol, drug, drug, and substance abuse? Is that what we always stayed with?
That's what it's always been. Doesn't mean it couldn't be something...
I'm not saying it should, but I know some students who have substance abuse policies. But maybe, maybe that's too vague. But if this is what we've had, that's the only difference.
Was this sent out and updated?
Um...
I got it.
Yeah. Got it.
What is the title?
Act fifty-one.
Oh, okay. That's where I was looking.
I guess if we were going to change it in the future, I, I would prefer to call it alcohol and drugs, because Act fifty-one doesn't have a lot of meaning.
Yeah. That's, that's thinking for me.
In fact, if that's something that would, you think we should clarify that now, let's do it.
Then you would have to go back to the SU Board.
No, no, this is, this didn't go to the issue.
Oh, this was just...
This is just an MBU procedure.
Okay.
So this would be fine, if you wanted to make that change.
All right.
Because the title doesn't say Act fifty-one. This is just a ongoing terminology that administrators have used for a while.
Well, yeah, since the motion already included student alcohol and drugs, then let's, let's go with that.
What was the purpose for this being revisited?
Well, yeah, make those changes.
Just to make those changes.
That's right. And in the past, the predominant change was, was this one, because there were some students that transcended. In other words, they might have had a third offense in one year, or they might have had two offenses, and then they started a new year, and all of a sudden the meter went back to zero. This just helps students to be a bit more accountable, and helps administrators to make sure that we're keeping a good operation here at school. I think I'm hearing it's interesting to change that.
Change it. Well, yeah, I don't think it was, well, obviously it was Act fifty-one, so.
On the first bullet for the first offense, where it says, one C, please shall be notified when drugs involved. Reporting a first offense alcohol problems to places within discretion of the administration. Can you give an example of discretion? I could see that being interpreted differently. Yeah. That's why I'm curious. Why wouldn't it just be reported to begin with?
Be mandatory thing, everything.
Where are we, John?
One C. The last sentence of one C.
So what they're saying there, it sounds like they, it's not, you don't have to get the police involved the first time around.
Maybe there's situations where that is logical, but I'm just curious, can you give an example of why that would be the case?
Well, I, I can give you an example somewhat related to that, John, I think. When it is, when it has been involving a possible out-of-school suspension of a student, we have had, we've had latitude to have that suspension served in school because of, because of the possibility of fear for the child's safety if they were to be out of the school building during the time of that suspension.
Was that, goes on?
And, and again, it would be something similar to that. It may not be exactly what you're reading here. You're looking at C.
You're talking at one C?
Yeah.
So I think the issue, Jay, is shall be notified when drugs are involved.
Correct. It could, it could be, you know, alcohol could fall into a very different category.
No, it's the second sentence in that paragraph.
Reporting a first offense alcohol problems to places within the discretion of the administrator. So it means, it's saying that, that you have the option to...
Correct. Right. Well, why wouldn't we just notify? I mean, it's almost contradictory.
I could imagine a circumstance where a student is found to not be in possession of alcohol, but have been using alcohol, and that the family was going to be addressing that issue, and there was not a clear-cut way that we knew where the alcohol came from, which would be very different from, I've got, I've got it on my person, I'm passing it around, so, you know, you can see. And I'm not saying that you wouldn't necessarily report it to the police, but I think that there might be a difference there between a student who we suspect, because sometimes there are, when, when you're doing an assessment, you can suspect, but you can't necessarily be a hundred percent sure that a student's been using alcohol, where with drugs you may have, especially if your student is in possession, it's a lot clearer, because it's a legal issue. But again, it's procedure. It gets given...
Well, the way I read it is, the police get notified when there's drugs involved.
Absolutely.
First offense with alcohol is the discretion of the administrator. Depends on...
If you're going to accept alcohol, you'll have to after July first, accept marijuana or also, because it will be legal in the community, but illegal for underage.
In both circumstances, both substances are illegal for minor students.
Right. But they're legal for the adults. So they should be treated equally. The alcohol and the marijuana should be treated equally. So I, I think the marijuana should be accepted out of the drug category. If there's an exception.
I think that would be a very bigger conversation. I, I think.
Personally, I put them both on pause the same.
Yeah.
Personally, I don't understand the difference as far as the, you know, if they're caught with drugs or alcohol. It's the same. So I guess that's what kind of gets me.
It's all the same. Warning, C. Yes.
So...
So you're saying no exception?
I think, I think we should...
Alcohol or drugs, police will be notified.
Either that, or make them both within discretion of the administrator. I mean, personally, I'm leaning towards more, you know, notified.
Well, is it an easy solution?
It's, it's clear.
You say drugs and alcohol, or?
Involved.
I mean, for something like this, the, the gray area of discretion kind of makes me a little bit nervous. I mean, I think it'd be easier just to make it default.
Ways to know the reasons why. See somebody using their discretion.
They never saw this. This is only here.
Exactly. The student who the administrator is, you know, that's, that's my concern. And the thing is, I mean, I think we could just, or the police can let them make that distinction. Oh, it was marijuana, no big deal. The law does not follow, etc. I guess I'm in favor of just moving the discretion part out.
And the thing is, it's a report. The police can do something about it, or not do something about it.
That's right.
The administration is being... And we're not defiling it. John, I liked your point, too.
The, the only, the only discretion that I could see in there would be a case when a student comes to school under the influence of alcohol. Why not marijuana? Because alcohol is, is legal with the adult community, and marijuana will be. I think that the two should be treated the same. I'm not in favor of the discretion at all, but if you're going to just, if you're going to accept alcohol from your policy, then marijuana should be also...
Right. It puts a lot of pressure on the administration if you're allowing them to use a discretion this way. If they see it basically as mandatory reporter, and something comes up, they're off the hook, so they have to call the police.
It was always our rule, automatically reported to the SRO. SRO, the board with me, or my two or three assistant principals, and then he or she determined whether or not they would actually take it to the magistrate.
So when, you're saying this came from our Act fifty-one committee, correct?
Yeah.
There's got to be a reason why they did that.
We made a change, so we're good. So we'll make sure that I change, I make it, so that it sticks here. And this will be... I'm going to say this can be voted on. Got it?
Okay. So that's the drug and alcohol procedure, which I don't think we voted on yet. Is there any other discussion on that? There are none. All favors of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys have it. Motion carries.
Okay. Second one. Is OCR. Now, this is the five oh four policy. You have a basic policy now. This is a much more comprehensive one. Five oh fours for accommodations that allow students to have equal opportunity to access a free and appropriate public education, students with disabilities, some temporary, some permanent. These are non-IEP special ed students. Best case example on a short term is, I break my leg, I'm in a school with an elevator, I get to use the elevator to go up and down multiple floors. It might be, student has attention deficit disorder, gets in the way of their learning, they have a five oh four plan to help with accommodations that enable them to learn. The reason that we're addressing this five oh four policy, we had a civil rights case in one of our, one of our districts, not this one, that required all of the districts within Franklin Northwest to update this new federally required policy. And so I'm asking you tonight to, to make this adoption motion.
All right. We'll be looking for a motion to adopt the five oh four policy. Do I have that motion? Motion by John?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Greg.
And so why, tell me again why this is up here? I mean, that, that's federal law, so what, what do we do? What was the, have we not had one?
We haven't had one as comprehensive as this.
I read it, I just wasn't sure.
When the, when the Office on Civil Rights looked at this complaint in another school, they said that in order to comply with federal law, that you need to have the most recent five oh four policy. That's what this is. So it's been vetted carefully with an attorney, and we've asked that it be adopted exactly in the form that it is. We have a timeframe of September thirty, and it has to be adopted in each of our schools, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Any further discussion?
How many people consists of this five oh four team?
It's different in different schools. How many, how many?
Message from Lynn Yates.
How many five oh four team members do we have?
It's a, it's a fluid. It will be, there's an administrator or guidance counselor who's assigned to the team, and then it would normally be the team of the students, teachers.
Okay. So it depends on the student?
Correct. Yeah.
Any other questions? There are none. I'll pay for that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys have it. Motion carries.
Proficiency-based graduation requirements. We had an earlier discussion about that tonight. This, this policy defines what Richard spoke about, the proficiency-based learning. He's the PBL coordinator, who talks about the proficiency-based graduation requirements. Our students graduating by 2020 have to do that within a school, any school in Vermont, so it's not just this school. And you'll see that's here in this, in this policy. Richard spoke with us about flexible pathways, talks about how you assign credits to courses, talks about the responsibility of the superintendent, and that is it. So, so again, was one that we sent out in advance for review. I would ask that the board consider adopting this proficiency-based learning and graduation requirement policy. learning and graduation requirement policy.
Will we entertain a motion to adopt that policy?
I'll move that.
Motion by John, second? Seconded by John. Sounds like the community still has some concerns about it.
May I ask a question, Josh, of you? Is it safe to assume then that every district in the state of Vermont is adopting a similar policy in this timeframe?
Yep.
Because one of the things that we're learning is that every time that Montpelier or the agency passes something, there seems to be a trend of delay around the state, and not everybody's moving at the same rate to fit.
I'll answer it this way.
Yep.
Every superintendent in Vermont has to attest that they follow state law. Before I sign my name on the line, I kind of like to be following it. So others choose not to do that, I'll just leave it for their boards to deal with.
This has been around since 2013.
And this doesn't specify how the grading happens. It says that there will be grading that addresses proficiency, but it's not the, it's broad enough so that the school can get input from the community and look at what kind of hybrid would follow law, give kids proficiency reporting, how proficient students are with standards, but also perhaps have grading that is more familiar to families as well. So, and I know that the board is interested in hearing more about that. This policy doesn't say we're getting rid of grades and saying that things will.
This is just a checkbox. Am I correct?
Yep.
This is a work in progress. I think we, you know, let's see what they come back with, and then we'd have a better idea whether this language is suitable for us or not.
We can do that too if you want, but I'll tell you that the changes that you would make in procedure wouldn't be this. It would be, the policy is X, what the board does, and the administrative procedure is what's going to come out of your committee meeting or the S U or board meeting in July.
I don't feel comfortable, Greg, with that, because that, we're talking, it's pretty much science or science in math of the committee, right?
Yep.
And the school curriculum is much broader than that.
I'm sure there's going to be this discussion in that, but that's not really, we're looking to address that science issue right now.
Make the motion to table.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Richard, seconded by Greg.
I still have some questions on implementation of this, because I guess, you know, different parts of the state are going to be different rates. I'm more concerned about within the S U, if this happens, I mean, I don't necessarily see anything in this that kind of directs all of the schools to follow the same, because eventually, you know, all the elementary schools are going to feed into MBU. You've got to make sure that they're all compatible as far as how we do it. So that's, logistically, that's more my concern is if this policy is gonna, it's gonna happen, I mean, it's gonna be tough to go to the S U level to, you know, make sure all the other schools are working together, that, you know, we have the same type of system. And I don't know if that's been recovered in this policy, but we do that.
Because this, all right, because this would be a S U-wide policy, so. But, okay, right now, there's a motion to table. I guess that takes precedence right now, so I guess all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All.
All hands. Is it three noes? Two noes? The first one's ayes, I'm sorry.
First.
You guys are ayes?
Yeah, show hands.
You want a table? All right, in favor of tabling, yeah, show hands.
Table.
Okay.
To the table.
And opposed to tabling? Okay, so I guess we're going to forge on with it.
So now we either motion to adopt it or not.
Right.
So I guess I just need to understand, because when I go to parent-teacher conferences and get them, one, two, three, four rating, that's what this is, correct? Next to it, I'm also getting whether it's an A, B, C, or D. Right?
Okay.
A minus, F plus. That can still happen. The percentage, the letter, whatever it is.
Yes.
That, to me, that should, that should happen alongside whatever the state's forcing us to do with this, you know. Is that all that this is? Am I missing something?
Correct. I mean, this, this, every school is supposed to adopt a policy saying that you will have a proficiency-based graduation process. So instead of, "I'm going to spend so many hours in an English-language arts class to earn so many credits, no matter what my grade," instead of that system, it will be more about, "These are the standards and the proficiencies I'm expected to meet. Do I meet them or not?" And it's about making sure that all kids aren't meeting at high levels, the content of the courses. And that we're also grading, "How well I communicate, how well I persevere and problem solve," separately than how much I understand this science unit. So that we're not just, you know, "I'm a good participator, so I get an A" kind of grading, which is sort of the old way of doing things.
This doesn't affect.
But this does not in any way say how the school will report out on student performance. It only says that we will have a proficiency-based system, and it has some protections and parameters around that. But the, I don't know of any two schools that are reporting out exactly the same way. So it really, and I know many schools that have tried it one way, felt that that didn't work very well, so they improved upon things. It really is, whoever said, a work in progress. This really is pretty transformational. I do not expect that any MBU or any high school is going to have the perfect grading process, or reporting process in this new system. And that's why I think getting input from families, having a lot of communication and forums around the changes that are making are going to be really important when we're at the implementation and what it really looks like at that level. This is a very broad policy.
When you said no to schools.
I mean, high schools.
Okay. But I mean, back to my question earlier, is, I mean, are they at least keeping them the same between elementary central up through the high school within that S U?
Proficiencies by law are really a 712 piece, and I don't know enough about what you're doing pre-K 6 to get kids toward proficiencies. I know what we've been doing in my old school. But that curriculum alignment, that standards-based instruction is work that's happening in other schools. And that is what gets kids ready when they come to MBU, to enter in a more credit. I mean, pre-K 6 schools are not as credit-driven as a 712. So, but the alignment work has been happening all over your school districts.
So this doesn't affect the grade point average or anything like that?
No, it's not about what the courses are. It's, you know, you won't see in here anything around what the science curriculum looks like or what the report card looks like. This is much broader. And yet, I'm stepping all over this, I was just going to listen. But I, and either, you wanted to discuss it, and I really heard that there were concerns, and I know that there are a lot of concerns in the community about changing in what report cards look like, fears about college acceptance and things like that. This policy in no way locks you in to anything. That's the main point I want to.
The other piece is, the agency, then, the visiting team will be here in October, October 25th, to judge how we're implementing the education quality standards, and that's what this is based on. And they'll be looking at these kinds of things. They'll be looking at, do we have the policy? How are we implementing those standards? That's all a piece of the accountability between the state and between the local schools.
All right.
Was this adopted at, you know, at the other schools?
Yep. Haven, yes.
Yes.
I've been that whole round. So yes, it was adopted in everyone.
We added a school.
Yep.
You know, the thing is, we all know, we're a policy, that's our job, is policy. How that is implemented, whether it's a grading and a grade point average and an agency, that administrator's doing. If it goes back to us, we get pushed by a concern, then we have to deal with it. But I don't think we should not, I think we have a responsibility to make sure we have a policy.
Did we ever get a motion to accept that?
I made a motion.
You did?
Okay.
And John seconded it, okay.
I guess, going back, going back to, I'm looking at the responsibility of superintendent. I don't see anything in there that would, from a policy perspective, show that the superintendent would make sure that it's consistent with all, within all the schools in the S U, which again, I'd kind of back on that.
I can lay your concern on, because in Title 16, Section 261, the superintendent's responsibility is to see that all curriculum is articulated both within each supervisory union and across supervisory unions for students that go outside, or students that come in from other SUs. So this would be aligned with current law.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? There are none. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
You guys have it, motion carries.
Next one is Title 1. Title 1, you recall last year, MBU became a Title 1 school. These are federal funds for additional math and ELA support. You'll see in this, it requires connection with parents, so that they know what's happening, that the schools have a compact between the school and parents to meet these federal requirements. In fact, it's pretty much, that's what this policy is about. You'll see the language underneath that. It also talks about annual meetings, about parents participating in, about explaining the rights, just a number of components here. It's a federal law requirement in every student's succeed act, and again, all our elementary schools are Title 1, MBU is in the second year of being a Title 1 school. A federal requirement that you receive the additional federal funds to implement this, that you have this policy. So it's just a, every three years, you have to update it, and this is the time to update that policy.
Will we entertain a motion to adopt, thank you, Richard, adopt the Title 1 title involved policy? Motion by Richard, do I have a second? Seconded by Eric. Any further discussion? There are none. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys have it, motion carries.
The last one. We have a, again, a lot of these have a lot of driven. This is a wellness policy. We have worked for years around nutrition in our schools. We have to follow very stringent nutrition guidelines. It's also about nutrition education and services. It's also about physical education and physical activity, and talks about the goals, the school-based activities. What's different about this is this has a component of nutrition and of physical activity for students every day in elementary and in middle and high school. And it also is directly aligned with Rise Vermont and the initiative in Franklin and Grand County to not only help our children be physically active and well, but also our citizens. And so I bring this before you for adoption of the student wellness policy.
Will we entertain a motion to adopt a student wellness policy? Motion by Eric.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Any questions, concerns? There are none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You guys have it, motion carries.
Last one, under old business, the safety grant. The state has allocated $4 million for schools, all schools, to receive up to $25,000 in safety grant. All schools are moving forward this month, by the 29th, I believe, all grants have to be in. It's pretty much guaranteed that a grant is reasonably written, and it follows the priorities of law enforcement visited every school in Vermont more than a month ago to assess where they are with safety training and safety equipment. All five of our schools were visited. We've also done a safety audit two years ago with the Vermont School Board's insurance trust. And with that has each year come $10,000 from Visba to update our safety equipment. This is a grant of $25,000 for, in this case, MBU, so this is a much more substantial upgrade. What we're doing is, we are hardening up the front of the school, and what that means is, we're moving the entrance doors. Jay, you want to talk about that?
The entrance doors to the in and out of the front lobby, that front lobby area is going to become smaller, a little smaller bit. The door leading into the theater is going to now be moved forward to that corner, so that the second entrance to the health office will now be behind that door rather than in front of it. And the other wall, the other doorway coming into the commons area is going to be moved forward so that those two offices, the one that is currently occupied by Carol Hakey and the attendance office, and the special education office that's occupied by Joanne Hamilton and Carol Dunphy, will now be behind that doorway instead of in front of it.
And that's consistent with how we are strengthening both the front door and the back door. If you recall, in the bond boat, there was a enclosed walkway that won't go in next year. It goes in two summers, just because we have to stage the different work at different times. So it's a multi-year plan, and that's what's happening this summer. Some of the $25,000 grant will go to specialized glass, Lexan glass in the front office that is much more safety-resistant. And again, it won't fully pay for that, it'll help to offset the expense of that, which is be funded, be paid for in the operations budget. So I'm just letting you know that that's happening. We will sign off on that in the next, probably tomorrow, I think, we'll have that done. Just want you to know that the state is allocating that money. $3 million of that from state funds, $1 million of it comes from the federal funds.
Before you leave old business.
Yep.
We had a student, our student rep said she was concerned about the cleanliness and the hot water issue in the locker room. I was just wondering, has that been addressed? Jay?
Your question, Henry, I'm sorry.
The student rep at our last meeting said that there was no hot water in the locker rooms, and she questioned the cleanliness, or she challenged it. Cleanliness in both the locker rooms and in the weight room is an issue. And Dan said he would look into it. I was just wondering if anything was done. Does that improve?
I was not aware of the water issue. I know that more often than not, we have more hot water than we do cold water down in that part of the building, for whatever reason with the shut-offs. And in terms of the weight room, I'm not sure why they would question the cleanliness of the weight room. That has been reconditioned and cleaned multiple times this year.
Dan was here last time, and I think he said he was going to go check out the girls' locker room.
Right.
The shower was, you know, basically, she was saying that they lacked hot water.
They do sometimes. It takes a while. Mainly, it takes a while for it to get.
Mainly, it takes a while for it to get there. Because it's got to run on a whole, and, and, you know, that's, that's the biggest thing. And when I was here, it took a long time for it to get there. Because it's coming from the boiler room and a lot of pipes is...
Yeah, that's understandable.
Almost need like a pre-charger, like the kitchen has.
Yeah.
We'll check it out.
But most schools are like that.
But yeah, you might want to chat with Dan.
I'd talk with Dan. The, the cleanliness, especially in locker rooms.
Right.
Is an issue. An important issue, but be sure, just isn't the students exaggeration of situations.
A quick question, Lynn, on your policy adoption, you've got that procurement card. You didn't go through that one?
Yeah, that's, we sent it to you just so you would know what it is. Again, that's an administrative procedure.
Well, it's under adoption, so...
Sorry. Yeah, you don't need to. The SU board did, and that's really where, where it resides.
Okay, just want to clarify because I saw that.
Appreciate that. All right, new business, new assistant special ed director. Yes, we were informed that Joanne Hamilton will be not, not starting next school year. She'll be working through the summer. Joanne has worked basically in a, not fully in an assistant special ed director role here because she doesn't have a license. She's been the, the student support service operations manager. So she's done everything but evaluate teachers, which has put a pretty big burden on Tanya Hayes, who is the director for all five schools. We have moved in a different direction and reallocated the money that we were paying Joanne into an assistant special ed director. We are close to making a decision with a in-house staff person who has some amazing credentials. She's seeking provisional licensure and I am very confident that she'll receive that. We're not at liberty tonight to announce who that is, but I just want you to know that that is a model that we've been using previous years. We just didn't have anyone in that position. And now we, you know, we are moving there and you'll know likely by July who that is. Do you have some copies of these that you can pass out? We have some teacher contracts, looks like two of them. So we're asking you to direct the board chair to sign the new driver ed teachers contract, David Lambert, and the new science teacher, Michael Williams. They will be staff members starting in the fall.
Who's Steve from?
David is from...
Burlington area.
Burlington. And Michael Williams?
Yeah, I know.
Good. He lives in Burlington right now.
Where's your child? Steve.
Good. All right, so...
So these are, these are Kristen?
Yeah. Well, the new drivers add, because we're adding a, adding a teacher in a car. The science teachers are replacement for...
We're replacing three science department members this year. Vera Lushere, of course, is retired. Steve Rizner is going to South Burlington. And Kristen Schreiber is likely to land in the Burlington area.
Still looking for more still?
Nope.
This is, this is her last one, okay? Great.
Jay, overall, how is the new contract had an effect? We moved to increase salaries significantly, so we, have we slowed down the exodus after the second, third year?
Probably a little early to tell. In terms of attracting people and being able to offer them a competitive salary, I think it has helped us.
It has.
Here, here's where the, here's where the rubber really hits the road. It didn't change as much people that were already here. What it really changed is attracting new people to come here. Because it put us at a, at a competitive level with the other districts south of us. That was the, that was the biggest change. All right, so I would, I guess...
So, yeah, I had a quick question. So, Jay, your hiring update saying that we, we hired three science teachers, math and eventualists, all these people. Have we not signed any of their contracts here?
Yep.
I would assume that they're named to be here.
I think you already hired them.
Others were hired previously.
Yeah.
This is just the latest round.
Right. We brought you a whole list of folks previously.
This is not the first time we've had them.
No.
Yeah, we, yeah, I remember somebody sending us a mail. I guess I just missed the correlation.
Okay.
I was expecting to see more people on this list given the update.
Okay. As I said earlier, the one that's hanging out there right now is the Spanish position.
Right.
On meeting dates, on meeting dates, the SBA will have a regional meeting in St. Albans for Franklin, Grand, Chilton counties on September 5th. If you are pleased with what the SBA does, you might want to go. If you are displeased, you really want to go. If you don't know what they do, you should go.
That's good. I like that.
September 5th, probably around 5 o'clock and there'll be a white summit.
I think we should probably have a motion to authorize the board chair to sign the two contracts presented.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Richard. And seconded by Greg. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. That's probably the end of those. That's it. Oh, we tell you that August 15th is the SU board meeting. I'm picking on August 1st. That decision was made on June 6th. So August 15th, that one, we decided empty meeting on July 26th. Okay. Ready for executive session? Do we have a motion to enter executive session for, it's a legal issue? Contract issue, a land negotiation and emergency plan update. Motion by Eric, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Richard. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, we're in executive session. Thank you very much.